The time, date, and location of this meeting was published in the Asbury Park Press and posted on the bulletin board in the office of the Township of Lakewood at least forty-eight hours in advance. The public has the right to attend this meeting and reasonable comprehensive minutes of this meeting will be available for public inspection. This meeting meets the criteria of the Open Public Meetings Act.
Mr. Grunberger. Mr. Franklin. Mr. Hiberson. Mr. Flansbottom. Mr. Herzl. Mr. Follman. Mr. Graffos. Mr. Renner. Mr. Garfield.
Okay, swing and festivals?
Thank you. Ally, the confirmation of recording status.
Yes, recording is on as well as the recording, the audio recording, video recording.
We have one thing on the agenda tonight, which is the master plan, Ally, right?
Correct, yes.
This is a continuation from the last meeting. Last meeting, we did not open it to the public. And at this time, I would like to open the meeting to the public. And I would ask everybody to please limit it to four minutes of testimony. I think this is the sixth meeting we had on the master plan, and basically, everybody spoke. And we deliberated with the last meeting. And I will ask for motion after the public hearing, and ask everybody again, please respect the four minutes.
I would also like to add that we've been through this process on multiple days for an enormous number of hours. The planning board has, you know, a lot of responsibilities. One of them is that we must rule on our applications in a timely manner. Under the municipal land use law, if a board does not act within prescribed time periods, there can be what's called an automatic approval. So we have a big responsibility to handle our very large caseload. So we have to be judicious in where we allocate the time. It's a volunteer board. We've had multiple special meetings such as tonight. And so we ask that you please respect the four-minute rule. And also, the comments tonight are limited to the changes that were made. We had public comment based upon the master plan that was on file. We went through that process. It took up many, many hours. The board deliberated in response to those public comments on that plan. As a result of those deliberations, there were revisions. Since there are revisions, we're continuing the public comment to make comments solely to those revisions. I point out that the chairman, in order to, the chairperson, in order to balance all of the competing interests and try to be economical in where the board spends its time, has the authority to limit the testimony to that which is relevant, and also to limit duplicative testimony, and otherwise take measures to keep the meeting in order. So for that reason, we're going to time each participant for four minutes. And if, you know, please just make certain to direct your comments to the changes that were made. Mr. Truscott, Mr. Herzl had asked that you confirm, did you make the changes to the document that were in accordance with the directives of the planning board at the last meeting?
Yes, I did, and I did submit them.
You submitted a memorandum that outlines what those changes are, with paragraphs and arrows, et cetera.
Was it noticed? Was it the...
Yes, it was sent out to the public, sent out to the state agency.
Thank you. It was sent out to the New Jersey Office of Planning and Plan, to the County Planning Board, and a copy was filed at the town hall for inspection.
The board has reviewed the documents. Based on comments I have, conversations I have had with individual members, I believe that they are going to, you know, that there are a couple things they want to clarify and narrow down, which I think is just, in large part, the semantics of the proposal. But what we're going to do is we're going to take comment at this time, and please limit your comments to the plan which has been on file. So we'll open that up, so members of the public who'd like to come forward, please come forward at this time.
My name is Michelle Donato, and I represent Fairways Homeowners Association. Wait, one second, please. Push shift to this one.
No, no. And I've done this right, proceeding. What the MLUF says is that the board should conduct the hearing, and I lost my microphone something now.
Push the button on the back, it should be ready.
Okay, I got it, thank you. It doesn't define what that hearing is, and obviously, this is different than an application. Just because it's custom and because I think it's not that big of an imposition, I will ask people to take an oath. You are not required to take an oath on this. You just have to give your name and address, since it's public comment. But because it is a custom in a hearing, and the statute does use the term "hearing", I will ask for comment. Attorneys do not get sworn in, because attorneys do not give their own opinions. That's against what attorneys are supposed to do. They're representing clients. That's why we don't put attorneys under oath, although they obviously have a responsibility to their profession and to their own oath to tell the truth and to not necessarily represent anything. But people sometimes say, how come the attorney doesn't get put under oath? Because we represent a client. We're not giving our own views or our own opinions, or our own exact testimony. If we did, then we'd be witnesses. So with that said, Ms. Donato, please proceed.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. We're here this evening because the September 22 draft of the master plan deviates significantly from what has been considered throughout the course of these proceedings with respect to the Eagle Ridge Golf Course specifically. I have directed a letter to the attention of the board addressing very significant issues with respect to what would be allowed at the Eagle Ridge Golf Course as a matter of law and as a matter of sound public policy and planning. Now, I think we need to begin with how this golf course became created. I provided evidence to the board of the original proposal in 1997 that included the entire tract of land, and that was the Eagle Ridge Golf Course and the Fairways residential development that currently exists. And it was developed under planned development provisions. It was a cluster, and it, the open space that resulted from the creation of the higher density housing in the Fairways development equals the golf course. Under the municipal land use law, that open space should have been protected by permanent reservations and restrictions, and apparently, it was not. So now, you're getting a double dipping into the density, completely contrary to the law, and I think you have an obligation to investigate that. Now, I'm going to say that the four-minute rule, I understand full well, I do a lot of planning board work, and I know how busy you are, but it has not been applied uniformly. And some people appearing before this board, particularly Brian Flannery, who's very actively involved on behalf of developers, is frequently given ten minutes at the least to present his issues before this board on this master plan proceeding. So I, to that extent, I hope that you will indulge what I think to be very significant issues that I think, for some reason, have gotten to this point, and it's really almost inexplicable. So after a complete analysis of your September 22 master plan, and a very, very careful look at the map that is on your website today, it's there today for the public to look at, Eagle Ridge is R40. That's what Eagle Ridge is. So now, and it looks like, and Eagle Ridge was never, R40 was never allowed for cluster development. It was back in these old planned development provisions in 97, and then it was owned R40. It's not R40 slash 20, which is what allows cluster in the R40. It's just R40. And now, Eagle Ridge is now being proposed because of some comment from a group called the Density Subcommittee. But it's now being proposed for development with no age restriction on tracts of 100 acres or more, and at a density of 3.6 units per acre. This is completely contrary. We're going to present planning testimony. This is not, this is not, this is not like, we're not in a boxing ring. You are planners. You are here to do what the law requires. And all of a sudden, we have this committee, who, we don't know who they are, we don't know who appeared before them, we don't know if they got four minutes, 10 minutes, or an hour to present their position, but it was some group, we don't know if they were an effective majority.
How much longer do you have?
Excuse me?
Can you finish up?
Another minute?
Okay.
Can I give her my three minutes?
Please proceed, Ms. Donato, we're using a minute. Please proceed, I have another minute.
I think that you started by minute, and you included your discussion in the beginning.
No, Ms. Donato, I did not. I waited till he was done speaking and I started.
All right, well, I just think four minutes is highly unreasonable in these circumstances because something was done behind closed doors with a committee that did not present its position before this board, and now, all of a sudden, it's mort. Public books, at your map, this site is R40, and at the least, you should make it R40, subject to confirmation as to the amount of the open space that must be deemed restricted in order to comply with the 1997 approval. I hope that you know that on behalf of Fairways, we have many experts who went before the NJDEP and the application for very high-density housing, which you are surreptitiously approving if you approve this master plan with this change for the Eagle Ridge Golf Course. And it's contrary to what your planners have said. What have they said repeatedly? As-is, as-built. We're concentrating as-is, as-built. As-is, as-built, that means this is open space, open space that was created by the density development of Fairways. So I, you know, I truly hope that we pull this issue out from however it got to this point. It's highly irregular. And just leave it R40 and force a consideration of what open space on Eagle Ridge is mandatorily restricted, as it should have been when this development was approved in 1997. And I think that then you would be doing the fair and reasonable thing, especially since the site is environmentally constrained. The NJDEP, other than for a plan endorsement which has never been effectuated, and which can't be effectuated until all the density that you're proposing is accommodated by traffic improvements. I don't even know if anybody here realizes how much more density would come out of this traffic if you put this change through. So I think it needs to be fully explored, and I truly ask that you do this in a fair and reasonable way, and not, we, you know, we really had a difficult time discerning how this ever came about.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
I appreciate it.
and which can't be effectuated until all the density that you're proposing is accommodated by traffic improvements. I don't even know if anybody here realizes how much more density would come out of this traffic if you put this change through. So I think it needs to be fully explored, and I truly ask that you do this in a fair and reasonable way, and not, we, you know, we really had a difficult time discerning how this ever came about.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
I appreciate it.
So then we have the continuity in our presentation. I was, I have my planner here to testify as well on more specific planning issues on this question.
How long will Mr. Gemma need?
Four minutes.
Thank you for focusing your...
I will. Just to be brief, my name is Gordon Gemma.
Mr. Gemma, please introduce, do you swear from testimony that before the board gives the truth altering the...
I do. And for the record, my name is Gordon Gemma, 68 Seneca Place, Oceanport, New Jersey. And I represent also Fairways Mews. And as a professional planner, I've testified here before, and just very quickly, and to reiterate, I'm here on behalf of Fairways Mews, your master plan on page 17 identifies the R-40 zone.
Mr. Gemma, please stop for one moment. Does the board member have any motion?
I'm making a motion that when the professional gets up, when he gets up, that's representing more than themselves, they should have more than four minutes to speak. I don't think it's fair to give them only four minutes.
Okay, the consensus of the board seems unanimous. Ms. Donato, do you want to defer to Mr. Gemma to make the arguments that you want, or do you want?
Mr. Gemma, you're not an attorney.
Actually, attorney as well as being a planner.
Mr. Gemma, how much time do you believe you need to fully, fairly?
Fully and fairly. I will try to stay as close as I can to recognizing other people here in four minutes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, John.
You have no limit.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
I won't say no minute.
I know, thank you. I appreciate that. Just to put in perspective what Michelle was trying to say, on page 17, the master plan identifies the R-40 zone as only permitting single-family detached housing on 40,000 square foot lots, along with places of worship and public as well as private schools. The only residential cluster you permit currently is in the R-20-12 and the R-40-20. The existing land use map identified as LU2 in your master plan, as well as the proposed land use map, LU4, both identify and recommend that for my client's property, the R-40 zone remains. So when you look at that, it seems to imply that staying in the R-40 zone. When you then go to page 29 of the master plan, it goes to the initial definition for the master plan, the single family in the R-40, but then it goes on to read, quote, "In addition, this land use element proposes that planned communities on parcels of 100 acres or more with a maximum density of 4.5 units per acre and without any age restriction requirements should be permitted as a conditional use," end quote. Essentially, this recommends changing only certain parcels in the R-40 zone, magically those parcels larger than 100 acres, being Eagle Ridge Golf Course, to allow houses as small as nine, on lots as small as 9,680 square feet without any age restriction. This directly impacts my client's property. On, by the memo of October 12, 2017, Stan and Marty recommended that the density be actually reduced a bit from 4.5 acres per unit to 3.6 acres per unit, consistent with your conversation you had here before, essentially lots no smaller than 12,000 square foot. But again, it's done in the context of the R-40 zone. You don't say you're changing the R-40 zone. You don't identify as a change. The reality is you've actually changed substantially the R-40 zone without pulling it out. And before I get to comments about the zone, I want to point out a few things. One, this is not consistent with the 2013 Lakewood Smart Growth Plan. Two, you identify on the REC plat on page 75 of your master plan, this is identified as private recreation space. On page 163 in the CE1 plat, you don't say whether this is, whether threatened or endangered species or anything else that's in danger of environmentally sensitive property. However, Michelle, by her letter of October 19, 2017, sent to this board a DEP denial dated August 3, 2017, of a CAFRA permit. Oddly enough, it was a CAFRA permit for approval on the Eagle Ridge Golf Course of a density similar to the 4.5 units per acre. They were denied. And the reason they denied it was because the NJDEP in August of this year said they made a finding of threatened and endangered species on this property. So you're being notified now, the DEP of that, of the threatened and endangered. What you should do, now notifying this, is change your CE1 plat to say, the CE1 plat per the DEP says is threatened and endangered on this property. This also goes to your PR-1 plat, as your planning, your state planning plat. In Lakewood, you have two state plan designations. One state plan designation is for PA2, suburban development. The other state plan designation is for PA5, environmentally sensitive land. Unless, according to your master plan, unless you've identified property as environmentally sensitive, then the rest of the town should be developed pursuant to suburban densities. That's what you're saying on your PR1 plat that you have and put in your master plan. There is no other place in the master plan that in any way justifies rezoning 100-acre parcel in the R-40 zone in excess for, from R-40 down to a higher density. The only place that exists is in Appendix 1 of the master plan, contains a report. The report is identified as the Lakewood Township Housing Density Subcommittee, dated July 17, 2017. It contains a section entitled, quote, "Other Requests," and it says, quote, "For A1 adult communities, location block 42, 524.231, that you should change the R-40 standards to allow on parcels in excess of 100 acres, a density of 4.5 units per acre by deleting the persons of age 55 and over restriction." They call it, oddly enough, smart growth neutral. How that is, I don't know. And then it goes on to say that also in adult communities, you should keep the ability to have, again, the senior recommendation, remove the senior requirement, and the recommendation is to, quote, "Create a new zone district." You call it R-40C, that allows for planned communities on parcels of 100 acres or more at a density of 4.5 units per acre without any age restriction. And so you actually call out creating a new zone, but you don't do that. What you do is you keep it in the R-40 zone. So anybody looking at the plan, they're looking at the plats, doesn't know it's being changed. Other than this recommendation, that is on page 265 of a 320-plus document, there's no other recommendations nor the justifications for changing your R-40 zone. And I am not sure, I do not know, and I've not been told, that the Lakewood Township Housing Subcommittee on Density had any public hearings, or had anybody to speak about it, and made any other recommendations. I am sure if they did, that my clients would have been there and given their thought about changing the definition of the R-40 zone so it seemingly only impacts them. And as a planner, Michelle talked about the original approval. It was given in 1997 for, for the community as well as for the golf course. There's no question that it was approved in 1997 in the R-40 zone. The only way it could have been approved in the R-40 zone, again, 40,000 square foot lots, if the density from one area was used to accommodate the open space in the other. By changing it now, what you're essentially doing is giving the density and doubling up the density without any justification. It doesn't make any sense. The proposed reclassification of the zone, which, by the way, for the R-40 zone, says that if it's a tract that's owned more than 100 acres, it doesn't say whether it's developed or undeveloped. Conceivably, somebody could put together in the R-40 zone as drafted, a tract of 100 acres, even if it's built, and then get a higher density out of it. I don't think that's your intent. I don't think it's your purpose. I think it's a mistake. The other thing you do is you make it a conditional use, but you don't say what the conditions are. So as drafted, you have to at least say, what are these conditions that would potentially allow such higher density? Allow basically the R-40 to magically go to R-12 without anybody really knowing about it, just go in the R-40 zone. And finally, as to this tract, the Eagle Ridge Golf Course was approved as part of the senior community. The senior community drains into the Eagle Ridge Golf Course. Michelle sent the original resolution which showed that they were approved together. The DEP has told you that in fact it contains threatened and endangered species. There's no justification in planning and in zoning as to why you would do this, other than for a recommendation made to a subcommittee that no one ever heard of. As a planner, it doesn't make sense. I understand the need that Lakewood has to try to accommodate growth. I understand the concerns that you have, to try to understand the impacts of growth. Respectfully, you would do much better for yourselves and for the public to say, "Look, if I want to change the golf course, don't try to put it in the back door. I want to rezonate the area, and I'll rezonate it. I'll go to the public, I'll have a public hearing on that issue, and we'll discuss the impacts." Finally, in your zone plan, and as any good master plan, you talk about how you impact the region, and what have you done, have you reached out to a surrounding neighborhood? The township of Tom's River sent you a resolution, don't even address, and it talked about the impacts of rezoning this property, talked about the impacts on traffic, the impacts on the environment. At the very least, acknowledge it exists. Michelle sent you a copy of that resolution, if you don't have it. I encourage you to read it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'd just like to make a couple of points of clarification with Mr. Gemma, if you would please, Gordon. I want to make sure that I understand, these land use maps that you were referring to initially, that are in the master plan, the draft master plan, those that LU4, that map, that map is for the Eagle Ridge Golf Course. Am I correct?
LU4, LU1, one is the existing zoning, which is on your website, and it's, and it shows Eagle Ridge and the senior community, R-40. LU4 is the proposed zone, and magically it shows Eagle Ridge and the golf course, R-40. So if you're looking at that, and you were trying to understand, is there a zone change? The answer is, well, not, for this.
Ms. Donato, the board's motion allowed Mr. Gemma to give time to give his presentation. I mean, how much?
Two minutes, not even. Not even, not even. I have my two questions.
Yeah, but it's just two minutes. There's a lot of people.
Yes. You said something about the October 17 memo reducing the density so that it would result in 12,000 or so square feet. Did you also hear that at a meeting?
What I heard at the meeting was in other areas, in other locations, the concern about having property that was owned R-10 should be at R-12 at the very least.
Okay.
And that was the concern articulated. So what I guess happened, they didn't mention it, that when you look at the 4.45 units per acre on the R-40, that really wasn't R-10, so it went up to an R-12. That was standing in his memorandum of October, which is why it's appropriate to discuss density at the golf course now.
Okay, and the last question that I have for you is with respect to the recommendations of that housing committee that you identified. Doesn't it actually also say in the A1 adult communities, it says to have this option for these 100 acres or more with a density of 4.5 units per acre, or change the R-40 zone to the R-10 zone?
Yes, what it does, and if you want to do that, my advice is if that's what you're going to do, then say it. It says, of course not, but don't try to do it this way by just changing how you classify it as a, I think it's broken.
Thank you very much.
No further questions.
No problem. Thank you very much. Please take your name to the record.
Can I just have a...
Yes, one second. So, wait.
I just want to stay on point over here. With this, are there any other properties in Lakewood that are 100 acres or more? Stan?
Stan, just asking a question.
Are there any other, are there any other properties in Lakewood that are 100 acres or more?
These are really...
The answer is yes. So this does affect other properties. This is not directly just for Eagle Ridge. Okay. And is there a way to put a word in there that doesn't allow a whole bunch of neighbors to just get together and have 100 acres or more anywhere in Lakewood?
Say what's currently 100 acres.
Or undeveloped 100 acres?
Undeveloped, crowded 100 acres, that you can't get together. I agree with that.
We're rearranging the furniture.
So the public can get picked up on the live stream.
Okay.
If anyone's watching this, they'll be able to...
Does this mean I get my seat back?
That's why you're down.
Ellie, Ellie, do me a favor.
You can have papers.
Ellie.
Yes, come on.
Okay, please take your name to the record.
Moshe Zines, Z-E-I-N-E-S, 112 Elmhurst Boulevard, Lakewood, New Jersey.
I affirm. First of all, I just want to...
You're speaking through, I appreciate it.
I just want to point out that I'm happy that I suggested to the, to the master plan committee several months back regarding the parks and the open space, that they have a Parks and Open Space Commission, that when someone deeds over a property or thinks that he deeds over a property for open space, that there's someone in town who actually looks at that and makes sure it goes on, so that we don't have a time in 12 years if someone says, "We thought it was for open space, or we thought not." Just four, three, three things regarding the proposed changes. One is, the page about the proposed changes notes that the planning board, board members want the ordinance, the zone changes, to only go into effect after the infrastructure's there. So for example, Cross Street, the planning board members spoke about either it has to be dualized or widened to three lanes, which I was at the county meeting, and they said that they think that within 18 to 24 months, they could really get working on that. So on the, on the page that was printed on the website for your adoption tonight, just says to dualize or widen Cross Street. It doesn't say to widen into three lanes. I just want to clarify that, it doesn't mean you widen by a foot on one side. The other two things is, yes, now that you made those changes that from the R-7.5 and the R-10, that they all have to go up to R-12, I just want to point out that on page 7 of the master plan, it still talks about this need for housing that we've had since the last master plan. I'm just trying to understand, because the planners are going to go to the planning board and the zoning board, get their, try to get their variances, because the master plan recommends that we need, that we need housing. But it seems to me you can have it both ways. You can't be saying only R-12s know our 10s, know our 7.5, and then we also have this extreme need for housing. Just two, just to me, just don't, whatever. The other thing is, and now with that, I'll conclude, Mr. Render, I think it was, was the one who brought up that shools with catering halls and schools with catering halls should be some type of conditional use. We all know the issues with the parking lots. I live down, down the block from a catering hall. They're always parking out on my block. Tom Hencho said that he, he looked on Google Maps on my street from five years ago before the catering hall was built. He didn't see cars parked there, so therefore he doesn't think that public works should come down a panicky spot. I just want to understand, I understand you're just recommending it to the township committee, but I just want to hear from this board, what's your vision of a shule with a catering hall, with a school with, with the catering hall? I understand the ordinance as it's written in section 905, I think it is where the schools are, it doesn't say that catering needs parking, which is an issue. So I just want to understand, what's your, if, if life was perfect and you had your way, what would you want the township committee to write?
I think it has to come back from ordinance, and we have to figure out how to have adequate...
Right, because once it goes to them, it would come back here for review.
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
Okay, next. We said, yeah, perfect, all right. Please take your name to the record.
Good evening. My name is Fred Huge, 24, Morning Glory Lane, Lakewood, New Jersey.
Yes, it is.
Can you hit me in the back?
Hello?
First name Fred. A few weeks ago, I presented some facts and figures that showed that the current growth rate of Lakewood would turn it into either the fourth, the third or fourth most populated city in New Jersey, after Newark, Jersey City, Patterson, passing Elizabeth.
Sir, please direct your comments to the changes. We can't revisit things that we've gone over.
I am getting to that. I just use that as a background.
Thank you.
Okay. More importantly than the total population is the population density. Lakewood is being transformed from a medium-density suburban city into a high-density urban center. Let's step back for a second and take a look at what Lakewood would likely become if you continue the current trend of rapid growth. Let's compare Lakewood to several other cities of similar size.
Sir, sir, I'm going to have to stop you. We've been over this. Please direct your comments to the...
Any changes on that?
Changes that were made in the master plan.
Okay, fine. The current master plan will increase the density of Lakewood by going from R-40s to lower density. Those changes will result in a much denser city. Those changes will result in a much denser city, cities similar, not to Woodbridge, Edison, and Cherry Hill, but more like Trenton, Camden, and Patterson. Those cities have something very in common with Lakewood in its current direction, that is, they are urban areas, high density, failing school systems, poor roads, and more importantly, a tax base which is based on housing, not commercial, realtor, and industrial development. One of the things that the current R forty to R ten or R twelve will do is increase the population of Lakewood mainly in two demographic areas, the Jewish population and the Latino population. Both of those populations have high, large numbers of families, which would put increased pressure on the school system, and when you go from an R forty to an R ten, that just increases the amount of non-owner occupied residents. And one of the things that Lakewood has a problem, which has really developed in the last ten years, is the large number of, of its population that we caught, that are under the level of poverty. Currently Lakewood has a poverty level of over twenty-five percent, and recent data says it is closer to forty, which is equal to or greater than the city of Newark. One of the things that you're going to do, this board, by increasing the density, you are changing Lakewood from a medium density, low suburban, to a high density urban area with all the problems that that entails. And I believe that this board should look at their responsibility, and their responsibility is to the hundred thousand current residents of Lakewood. It is not to the few landowners, the developers, and the builders. Once they build their house and leave, they have little or no concern over increased traffic, lower property values, higher taxes, and developing an urban ghetto. So I'd ask you to take a look at the master plan, and whenever you take an R forty to an R ten, okay, you are increasing that density, and you literally will turn Lakewood into an urban ghetto.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Just one more thing, in case you doubt my numbers, here's a copy of the individual deck.
Okay. I don't know. At the end, it was.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, who else would like this? Please come forward. Please state your name to the record.
David Kaplan, C A P L A N, with that two oh five Paddlehorn Drive in Lakewood. Yes, I do.
Please pick up the mic and speak on the show here.
Okay. I just saw they recently stopped Fred here from discussing, I'm not sure exactly what it was, but it seemed they were advising to stay on topic regarding to the master plan. Is discussing density relevant to the master plan? It seems like the master plan seems to call for increased density. I would think that his views, which express, you know, the concerns regarding the high density, directly relate to the master plan.
Sir, please direct your comments to the changes. We've been through all this, the board has heard hours and hours, if any, the people who were here.
I mean, it is people that want to express their views and their frustration.
Sir, we, the public board is closed, we have a limited purpose, and the purpose for this hearing is to discuss the changes that were made since the last round of hearings when the public.
In regard to that, I personally live on Paddlehorn Drive, which is off of James Street. They recently, on Cross Street, has two, either when you come down to James Street, you can continue James Street into Cross Street, or through Drake Street over there. Now, by redeveloping those areas around Cross and Drake Street, the only way, unless they go to Cross Street, the only way to get out of those areas is to come down James Street. Now, recently, next to the Bezzacchio School, they put up, I think it's about seventy duplexes that are up there, which you figure that's about a hundred and forty families, probably around two hundred and fifty cars. Those cars are all going to be coming down James Street, either making a left onto Sunset to come down to Central, which is already a parking lot every morning, but they're going to continue onto James Street, which is going to hit Route Nine, which is backed up. Now, any further development in that Cross Street Drake area, unless they can get through onto Cross Street and then continue from there, the only option is James Street. Now, especially I've heard that they already start the plan from Prospect to come through onto James Street. Now, if you allow from Prospect to come onto James, plus the Cross Street to come to James, where is all this traffic that's coming from those areas going to flow out to? There's got to be some way that there, that any development in that area has to have some way to relieve it. And right now, when I leave to work, I come down Paddlehorn, I make a left onto Sunset, I sit on Sunset for five minutes, and I sit on Central for fifteen minutes, so that I can make the left onto Route Nine. But I go down James Street, it's at least a thirty minute drive from there. But I go down Cross Street, then Cross Street's impossible. So anything with Cross Street has to have some way that's going to allow any buildup in that area, which I believe was zoned for much, you know, lesser density. If that is going to be increased, that density, there has to be some way for that traffic to be alleviated, so that all the building in the area could somehow either move through Cross Street or through Route Nine.
Thank you very much. Next.
Please state your name and give your address.
Walt Lucas, Newport Avenue, Lakewood.
Do you swear a firm testimony before the court with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yeah, I do. Sorry.
Please proceed.
Please proceed, thank you. Go. This addresses the fact that the previous September twenty-second plan.
Please speak into the mic, please.
I'll try. The September twenty-second plan had R ten, and it was changed to R twelve. I had been to the township committee, May, June, July, and I had spoken to the density subcommittee, I spoke to both of them, and they both thought my comments were worthy. The, the theme I think Lakewood needs, again, I'm only addressing Cross Street and principally Cross Street, James, to the Jackson border, which is only about a half a mile. Some background, I've been on, on Cross Street since nineteen seventy-nine, in Lakewood since nineteen sixty-six, so I've been there since nineteen seventy-nine. Around nineteen ninety-seven, about eighteen years later, twenty years later, fairways came along with eleven hundred people, and there were no noticeable increase in traffic. I'm there every day, I go back and forth every day, I go to the golf course almost every day. Eleven hundred homes, no increase in traffic. The golf course shows up a couple of years later, and again, two, three hundred people a day, parties, banquets, no increase in traffic, no noticeable increase in traffic. The zoning laws changed about five, late five years later, and now it's a disaster because of the schools, and only the schools. You drive onto Cross Street, it's bumper to bumper. It turns out, so you don't need data to see, what if I had three more houses, what if I had five hundred more houses, it's simply the schools, nothing else but the schools. So, the township, the town committee about four or five years ago, did ask the state to come in and do a study. They came in and did a study, and I'm going to use the word normal. They found in a normal town, the traffic density is seven AM to about eight thirty. They come to Lakewood and said, no, 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 Lakewood, it's nine o'clock with the schools. So the schools caused a problem, it's not the individual, six houses here, ten houses here, eleven hundred houses, that's not the problem. My theme has been single family houses, if you go from James and Cross to Jackson, it's a half a mile, put single family houses out there. The, so at the last meeting, when you guys were doing your thing, I got the sense, you, when you got your own little time here, I got the sense you were throwing darts at a board, trying to see what something, something stuck, and, and, and with no positive criteria, nothing like that. Positive criteria, you want to add some homes, there's a good place to do it, James, Cross, out to Jackson, it's only a half a mile, put some homes. If you make attractive zoning for builders, the schools will go away, all right? There won't be any more schools, no one's going to sell to a school anymore, because now they can sell to a builder. My neighbors, one by one, Pax, Pax up at eight acres, he sold to, to a, to a school because nobody else wanted it, no builders. Then this guy was Roger Byrd, another eight acres, he sold another two, three hundred kids. Byrd's All sold, another two acres for a school, no else sold. So, so, and guess what, next week, you're going to hear an application for a school who bought Byrd's All's house, two acres, it's going to be for seven hundred and fifty students. Now, you want to talk about buses, cars, you want to do that? That's nonsense. Put family housing out there, all right? And when you do it, I recommend R ten. I lived in an R ten community for about, over ten years here in Lakewood, the kids grew up together, the families grew up together, parties, birthdays, everything was lovely with R ten. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next. Please take your name to the record.
I'll just get a longer microphone.
A longer mic?
Yeah, like, I have to lean over. Can I stand on the side?
Yes, you can.
Oh, cool.
Please take your name to the record.
Harold Hushwitz.
Do you may address?
Fourteen ninety-six Cedar Row.
Yes, I do.
Okay, first of all, I just want to address the person who spoke before me. Unfortunately, along with housing, there's a need for schools, so if you don't like schools, then let's try not to build too much housing, that's first of all. But we're going to need schools, that's just the reality. Children don't pop out of the sky from nowhere, they come out of a house. Okay, all I want to say is, and I'm going to be very succinct, because I see you don't want anyone discussing anything other than the changes that were done to the plan. At the last meeting, I was here, and I was very, very happy to see that the planning board seemed to be in the right direction, going in the right direction, and realized that the town is at a point where we're at critical mass, and we really can't handle too much more building. So they decided to make the entire new area R twelve, and I think they made it very clear. So I just have one simple question, there were changes made, correct? Why were these changes made? Was there something unclear that the planning board said? Is there something that they didn't, that we didn't understand? What were these changes made for? Were they made for the better of the people of Lakewood, in order to make sure that it gets done correctly? Or were they made for specific people who need specific favors done for them? Now, I'm going to ask you, and I'm going to tell you that this is not, doesn't have anything to do with the subject matter, but you don't live in Lakewood, do you?
This is a comment.
That doesn't belong, I figured, but you don't live, I, I won't even ask you, I'll tell you, you don't live in Lakewood, you live in Point Pleasant, and if your town was being treated the way Lakewood is being treated, you would not stand for this. You would get up, you'd scream, you'd shout, you'd sing. You wouldn't stand for the raping of an entire community. People who put down, I'm not talking, I'm not talking to the seniors. I'm not talking to the seniors. Shh, I have no respect for the seniors. Shh. It wasn't important. I'm, I'm not, I'm not only talking to the seniors, I'm talking to my entire community, I'm talking to the people that put down their roots here, that grew their families here, I'm talking about the people that built their businesses here, okay? These people put their whole life into this town, and to go and tell these people that now, if you want to get from one side of your town to the other side of the town, well, you better, better make sure that you have an entire day to do it, is wrong, okay? I spent today, I went to Mr. Furman's restaurant today, it took me thirty-five minutes to get there at four o'clock, not rush hour, not traffic hour, there's no reason it should take me forty minutes to get there. It took me another half hour to get back. That's, I could have gone to New York. This is not, and then you're, now you're going to say we're going to build more, now if it was up to me, which it's not, I would say, sorry, everyone out of the pool, we're not building anymore. We're not building anymore, no more big projects. But, but you're not going to do that, so you did the next best thing, and you limited it to R twelve. Now, some people went in and secretly put in some new little things in there, I know you're counting, you want me to stop, right? You went and put some little things in there to make sure that whatever they did, the intentions that this board had, will now be undone. And I want to ask you, you're the planner, and you were hired to do what is the best interest of the town, not the best interest of a few people. I just want to ask you a question, do you know how many square miles Lakewood is? Do you know how many square miles Lakewood is?
This is a comment period.
No, I'm asking a question, do you know how many square miles Lakewood is? You don't know how many square miles Lakewood is, and that's unconscionable, that you're a planner, and you don't even know how many square miles our town is? How should you plan for that? How should you plan?
Okay, okay, thank you very much.
It's twenty-five square miles, just in case you want to know.
Thank you. Next, please come forward. Yes.
And I apologize.
One second, please, I apologize.
You don't have to respond to that. Sir, please state your name.
Jim Campbell, six, Rosewood Court, Lakewood.
Yes. Swear a firm testimony before the court with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I affirm.
Please proceed.
Okay, old changes, new changes. I know the board tried to do the right thing at the last meeting, I know you asked a lot of questions, and I know you can't avoid the traffic, so you clearly know the density problems here. I don't know if you really know the housing problems, and I'll say, no names, but planners, current or past, or people who come in, are very slick, they can tell you anything. I suggest this board, the planning board, the zoning board, the manning council, any board in Lakewood, should go in their car and drive around and see some of the last developments. The parking lots are part of the street, everything is a mess. I mean, it's not smart growth, it's slum growth. Please vote no on this plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please come forward. Please take your name to the record.
Thomas Riley, I live in Leisure Village, six sixty-two Plinett. I was here last month.
What did you have to say?
R I L E Y.
Do you swear a firm testimony before the court with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Just to comment again, I, I caught a look at the upgraded master plan, nothing addresses the traffic on Route Seventy. I live over by the parkway, it's a nightmare, any time of the day or night, pollution, people get mowed down riding bicycles, safety issues, no sidewalks, there's nothing in the master plan to address that. And the other thing I thought was something that we ought to reconsider before we go ahead with all these plans, is at the last meeting, we were trying to discern the difference between a townhouse and a multifamily, and I suggested that it was fire protection, and to take a look at the, the remains of the structures that were behind the park off New Hampshire Avenue that suffered that great fire. And I think that should be cleared up and made crystal clear, so that when you do wish you will permit to build or a variance, you're not endangering people's lives.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Next, please come forward. Please state your name to the record.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Susan Baeheeny, B A E E H N Y, from one sixty-seven Skyline Drive, Lakewood.
Do you swear a firm testimony before the court with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, please proceed.
My speech is a little different, and, from what I feel, all right? Okay. My mother was born from, my mother was from Sicily, and after sixty years in America, she went back to visit her hometown. When she came home, I asked her how it was, and she said, terrible, garbage all over. She said that every year they have a new mayor, and that mayor blames the other mayor, so nothing gets done. And here we are in Lakewood, still the same problem pass on, roads, traffic, overpopulated schools, buses, and more. Plus, now we have a problem with Eagle Ridge Golf Course. When Coke first approached the zoning and planning board, he was approved for Fairways Home and for the golf course, which he named Eagle Ridge Country Club. The golf course was built on an environmental sensitive area. This golf course turned out to be rated as one of the best out of the top ten, top one hundred golf courses in America. Over the years, zoning and planning boards have changed hands or members, and of course, Lakewood started to change heavier around two thousand and five to now. Zoning and planning have been selling and swapping our township owned land, and even industrial land to developers. Since these board members have been so generous, why not swap every orange parcel for developers, and keep this golf course as one of the beauty and main attractions to Lakewood? Both panels seem to have power to do as they want, regardless of the D E P and the resident complaint. This is our town too, and we would like to keep this beautiful golf course and not be destroyed and taken down by builders that want to build over eighteen hundred more homes and shop. But this size of project is putting a little Lakewood inside of Lakewood, which needs its own zip code, along with its own water tower, sanitation, police, fire department, the whole nine yards. So, and they better be paying their own taxes. Whoever owns this golf course, why not be proud that you have a golf course in your portfolio, and make it more beautiful, to be in the top twenty in our country, and who knows, pro golfers could come here, and Eagle Ridge could be on TV. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's my wife. My name is, you want to swear me in?
You swear a firm testimony before the court with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Now, please, please take your name to the record.
My name is Ken Baeheeny, B-A-E-H-N-Y. I live on one sixty-seven Skyline Drive. My wife and I lived in Lakewood for over fifty years, and as two thousand twelve, we moved from Spruce Street to the Fairways, because it was a nice environmental and safe area. Our home is on Skyline Drive and backed up to the border of the golf course. Our house has a basement, and is bone dry from the time it was built in two thousand one to now. There's a catch basin in our backyard, facing our backyard, to our left is a hilly ground, which slopes down to the catch basin, and also to the right. If over eighteen hundred homes and a shopping center is built, where does the water go? God only knows. If this project goes through, our basement and others along that strip could get mowed. If that happens, there could be possibility of major health problems, and again, if this happens, there will be legal problems, and more from all branches of the government. Remember, this eighteen-hole golf course was built on sand and gravel quarry, and nine holes was added later on the top of a landfill. This landfill is an environmental sensitive area, and this massive project is in the wrong place. If this project is not thoroughly thought about carefully, could cause massive litigations and health problems to the people that may live in that area. And also, for example, I can give you an example, Sebagi, I don't know whether anybody knows about Sebagi. Fifty years ago, in Tom's River, they had a bad problem with highly contaminated toxic waste, over five thousand barrels, fifty-five gallon drones, needed to be getting rid of. Where did they go? Nobody knows. They could have went to dumps, they could have gone to Eagle Ridge dumps over here. Plus, other people, chemical companies were dumping in areas illegally, and the DEP and people involved really aren't a hundred percent up with what was going on. There was major lawsuits in Tom's River because of cancer, through kids, people, and everything else, and they still have a contaminated area there. I think this show, this project should be carefully considered, because of problems that could arise out of this, and possible health problems, and legal action taken against the wrong people that passed this. This should be very, very carefully considered.
Thank you very much. Next, please come forward. Please take your name to the record.
Carol Sukno, fifty-nine Foxwood Road.
Name of the speaker?
I do. The last meeting, when we weren't allowed to speak, the planner spoke about the need for stores, because people want to walk, and I just have one statement to make. I've watched the Super Stock Store on Route nine, and the new stores that have gone up at the corner of Chestnut and Route nine. The only walking that's done are the people who get out of their cars, lock the door, and walk into the stores. The cars are now parking on Route nine for Super Stock. No one is walking. The walking idea is just ridiculous.
Thank you. Please go ahead, please. I don't have your time ready.
Just a minute. You got my name, Ken Baeheeny? There's a book out that was written by a Mr. F-A-G-I-N, about Tom's River, the problems. Get the book and read it, it'll make your hair stand up. And like Mr. Franklin was saying, since sixty-nine, nothing has been done from the borderline of howl all the way down to Tom's River. Why? Has to be something to do with people getting together. But read that book, it'll make your hair stand up.
Thank you.
Because contamination, I don't want to live any closer than where I live right now in the Fairways to that dumps.
Okay, thank you. You're next, please step forward. Please take your name to the record. Joe Delanti, sixty-five Sunrise Court, Lake City University. V-I-O-L, eight M-T-E.
I do. I'm concerned about the proposed changes to the Lakewood Golf Course zoning, because if that change does go through in high density, does take place as far as the construction goes, it really prove that, it really provides a major problem, not only for the immediate Lakewood itself. You are here to address that, I understand, that is what your responsibilities are, but I'm more concerned, not only about what will happen to Lakewood, but what will happen to the outlook upon the Jewish community as far as the resistance that is taking place from the decisions going forth from Lakewood, and allowing the conditions to become so out of control, whereby the other surrounding communities see what's going on, and are so concerned about that happening to them, that it provides a drawback to what you're trying to achieve. Yes, you may achieve more houses in Lakewood itself by building higher density and creating more congestion and problems for our residents and community, but the living conditions and quality of life is definitely deteriorating, will deteriorate all the more. With this happening, and publicity that goes on within the newspapers, the media, and all those that are witnessing what is happening around in Lakewood, they're certainly going to take opposition to wanting to see the growth take place in our own community. That is where your responsibilities really are important, to really look at what you're doing, the damage you're causing for your own, your own race, your own people, because they are not looking to, they're not looking to plan properly for, for filling your responsibilities here in Lakewood. Making decisions because the almighty dollar is available is creating a disastrous place for people to want to live in Lakewood. And that is exactly what other communities will want to avoid, and I can understand that, because, you know, I'm partly Jewish in the sense that my heritage goes back to the Jewish, you know, Abraham and so forth, with the belief there, but I care about what's going to happen when the process here is really going under, being thrown under the bus, because when you throw it under the bus, it's going to be very evident to all the communities around us, as it already is, and therefore, the problem of getting more people to move in and be part of the communities is going to be more difficult. So I, I beg you, look at what your responsibilities are, consider what the outcome is going to be, because you already know it, and make a good decision to prevent the harm and difficulties that all of the Jewish people who would like to move into the communities surrounding us will face, as they see more and more detrimental situations occurring here in Lakewood. And I'm concerned about that part.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, please come forward next. Please take your name to the record.
My name is Mike McLaughlin.
Name of the speaker?
M-C, yes, I can. M-C-L-A-U-G-H-L-I-N.
Okay.
Eleven El Dorado Drive, Lakewood.
Do you swear a firm testimony before the court with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Here's a good reason why I'm asking this planning board to reconsider any decisions in developing Eagle Ridge, and also higher density in the town of Lakewood. You might be familiar with, a few weeks ago, and I may be off by a few days, our governor came down and gave us, if I'm not mistaken, seventy-five million dollars to clean up Barnegat Bay. Yeah, he wants us to clean up Barnegat Bay. He's donating, he's giving money from the state to make sure that Barnegat Bay is clean. We're going to countermand that, because if we build and we develop on this property which drains into Barnegat Bay, we're going to be doing harm to what his request is. We're a shore community. Everything that we do affects and drains off, and there's only a certain amount of drainage that this coastline can handle. And I do believe that you must consider the effects of what you do here in this town of Lakewood to be more than just affecting the people here. We will be affecting industries that are out there trying to earn a living, because we will kill populations of fish, shellfish. We have to do our part. So I'm asking you to reconsider it, because there's a bigger picture here.
Thank you. Anybody else in the club who'd like to be heard, please come forward.
My name is Frederick Robison, R-O-B-I-S-O-N, seventy-nine Eagle Ridge Circle, Lakewood. I do. Good to see you again, Chairman of the members of the board. Related to the changes, within four minutes, John.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
In an answer to Mr. Renner's query before, and in support of the comments made by Mr. Gemma and Ms. Bonato, they discussed the definition of the R-forty zone, and the question was asked, how many properties were in excess of a hundred acres that might be affected by this? If you look at your proposed zoning map, there are only, assuming the R-fortys are changed to R-twelve that were discussed at the last meeting, there appear to be only three R-forty zones remaining. One of them is, in your environmental map, is a stream bed area, in part, can be developed as described in this subset of the definition of R-forty. The only two that it is remotely possible, one of which is highly probable, is Leisure Village East and Eagle Ridge Golf Course, the Fairways at Lakewood. I am not anymore a planner, never have been an attorney, but there's every indication to me that when you define a zone in a manner with an exception, it can only affect one or two properties, it has the distinct possibility, I might go so far as to say the probability, of being declared spot zoning. I would respectfully request and suggest that you eliminate that, that second paragraph that says it's over a hundred acres, you can do a cluster zone at three point five or four point six, whatever the number was. It is a massive problem waiting to occur, and I don't think this board is anxiously creating massive problems. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else in the club who'd like to be heard, please come forward. Anybody else who'd like to speak? Please come forward. Please take your name to the record.
My name is Ed Savo, S-A-V-O. I'm at twenty-two Skylark Lane in Lakewood, New Jersey.
Sir, do you swear a firm testimony before the court with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. For many years, I've worked construction from Jersey City all the way up through Angledwood Cliffs, put many shovels in groundwater, there was, I put shovels in Palisade Park, where the old Palisade Park is. We built a lot of projects, all the way up and down. At the end, when we got to Jersey City, we built a new city called Newport, ran into a lot of trouble. We put a shovel in the ground, and we came up with chroming. Seems like the people that were making steel on the west side of Jersey City were dumping it on the east side. The whole waterfront was chroming. So when we got down by Liberty Park, we no longer put shovels in the ground. We put asphalt, and we put a golf course, to cover the contamination. So when you put a shovel in that ground, nobody knows what's going to be in there, and you may be causing the biggest catastrophe to this town that we have. So be careful. I know planners don't know about this, because I, I was the guy who put the shovels in the ground. I was the guy that did the work. I know what's there and what isn't there, but you don't know until you put the shovel in the ground, and that is really suspect, that problem. So, be careful.
Thank you. Anybody else in the club who'd like to be heard, please come forward. Anybody else who'd like to speak? Please come forward.
Aaron Hirsch. One forty-six Mountain View.
I had gone over after the last meeting, it was brought up at the last meeting about not approving anything under R-twelve. I went through the map of all the changes. Yes, technically, in my area and the Chestnut area, there is nothing that officially is under R-twelve, but there's different names for them, which falls far below that. For instance, there's a B-five zone that permits lots a minimum size of two acres. It's being proposed to go to a B-five A, which would allow two acres, well, each acre's seventeen, that's thirty-four units instead of one on two acre. Talk about a zone change. Nothing under R-twelve, but this is insanity. This is cra- I don't even know how it's even on the table, and it was brought up, and the planner said there was nothing on Chestnut. Then there's another, there's another zone being brought up to change to RM, which the minimum lot size for that is seventy-five hundred square feet. That is below R-twelve. I don't understand, yes, technically, in my neighborhood, there's nothing under R-twelve, but they have different names, they're far worse. And any zone that's being proposed to go to B-five A is, I don't even know how it's even on the table. It is way past density, you're talking about seventeen units on an acre, talking about one house on two acres. That's a massive, massive change, that should absolutely not be going in. I sent emails to all the planning board members late, last night, I forgot to, I did not have any other emails I needed to forward it to, but I made a list specifically, like in my area from the map number four. Number four's being changed from B-five to B-five A. Number twenty-nine is being changed from R-twenty to RM, which is about seventy-five hundred square feet. Then we have number twenty-three going from R-twenty. The map that you provided a few meetings back with all the zone changes, number twenty-three was going from an R-twenty to R-ten A, and twenty-eight is going from an R-twenty to RM, which is-
The whole waterfront was chroming. So when we got down by Liberty Park, we no longer put shovels in the ground. We put asphalt and we put a golf course to cover the contamination. So when you put a shovel in that ground, nobody knows what's going to be in there. And you may be causing the biggest catastrophe for this town that we have. So be careful. I know planners don't know about this because I was the guy who put the shovels in the ground. I was the guy that did the work. I know what's there and what isn't there. You don't know until you put the shovel in the ground, and that is really suspect, that part. So be careful.
Thank you. Anybody else in the club who'd like to be heard, please come forward. Anybody else who'd like to speak? Please take the name to Lakewood.
Aaron Hirsch.
Your address?
146 Mountain View.
Do you swear a firm testimony before the board with the truth or not?
Okay, please proceed.
I had gone over after the last meeting, it was brought up at the last meeting about not approving anything under R-12. I went through the map of all the changes. Yes, technically in my area and the Chestnut area, there is nothing that officially is under R-12, but there's different names for them, which falls far below that. For instance, there's a B-5 zone that permits lots a minimum size of two acres. It's being proposed to go to a B-5A, which would allow two acres, well, each acre is 17, that's 34 units instead of one on two acre. Talk about a zone change. Nothing under R-12, but this is insanity. This is cra- I don't even know how it's even on the table. And it was brought up, and the plan said there was nothing on Chestnut. Then there's another, there's another zone being brought up to change to RM, which the minimum lot size for that is 7,500 square feet. That is below R-12. I don't understand, yes, technically in my neighborhood, there's nothing under R-12, but they have different names, they're far worse. And any zone that's being proposed to go to B-5A is, I don't even know how it's even on the table. It is way past density, talking about 17 units on an acre, talking about one house on two acres. That's a massive, massive change. That should absolutely not be going in. I sent emails to all the planning board members last night. I forgot to, I did not have any other emails I need to forward it to, but I made a list specifically like in my area from the map, number four. Number four is being changed from B-5 to B-5A. Number 29 is being changed from R-20 to RM, which is about 7,500 square feet. Then we have number 23 going from R-20. The map that you provided a few meetings back with all the zone changes, number 23 was going from an R-20 to R-10A, and 28 is going from an R-20 to RM, which is R-20 to 7,500 square feet. This is, and I also as well emailed a list from the map as well, a lot of other areas that fall below the R-12, which really, the planning board put in place a criteria, and quite frankly, yes, it wasn't R-12, but it was being, you guys are being tricked, okay? They're getting, these proposals are far worse than R-5. So I really, I'm asking you guys, please, we got to do a little more investigating on what's going on here, and please do not do such drastic cluster insanity to our town.
Thank you.
Just stick on this R-5 to R-5A. Wasn't that one of the zones that was recommended to be changed in the last master plan? And that's why we said, do you know what he's talking about, Chestnut Street?
Number four. I don't have the numbers yet. I could show it to you, I have the map here.
Have it in the card book.
Just to show, I want to know if it was recommended in the last plan.
It was and was not the back.
Number four right here. Chestnut meets up.
Sir, you can come up to the podium and rekindle.
Michael Eisenstadt.
Please follow me.
4S Circle. My last name is spelled E.I.S.E.N.S.T.A.D. I have three main concerns.
Please take the mic.
Sorry. I have three main concerns about the changes in the master plan that were mentioned in the memorandum that were published on the planning board website. Number one, there was a change from A1 agricultural that it should change to residential estate. We just want to confirm that that doesn't apply to any de-restricted areas because there are A1 zoned areas that are de-restricted, and we feel like that this remain as agricultural, that A1 should not apply to that.
Okay.
And number two, there's a, there was an issue with Crow Street dualization, that there's supposed to be dualization throughout Crow Street. According to the master plan, that's only supposed to be till Massachusetts Avenue. What about the last stretch between Massachusetts and Route 9? Is there any, is there any concern for that? Third issue that I noticed was that there's a RM zone on Crow Street adjoining Prospect. When the debate about the R-12 versus the R-75 was raised, that was part of the discussion, but in the changes, it isn't included. Can that be included as part of the R-12? Those are all my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anybody else in the club who'd like to be heard, please come forward. Anyone? Come forward.
If anybody else is hiding in the back, come line up, please, because we're wasting time just on walking.
And then close the panel when it comes up.
Sir, please state your name and address.
Isaac Goldsmith, G.O.L.D.S.M.I.T.H., 87 Finchley Boulevard in Lakewood.
Do you swear a firm testimony before the board with the truth or not?
I affirm.
Yes, spell it. Okay. And please be quiet, audience, we cannot hear.
I usually like to wait till after Brian speaks because then he has bridal to say and we don't get to about it, but first of all, you mentioned the RM in the cross Prospect Triangle. Besides the Prospect side, it also goes onto Cross and, you know, maintaining a single family, at least a part of it, it sort of blends all over if we can focus on that. But you mentioned also about the road. Imagine two lanes going to one lane like it does by the lake, it's going to be a disaster to go down Massachusetts Cross, where you have to merge from two to one, and that's where the main problem is, is the Route 9 with three lights to get through, even that seemed for Rockwell. The last thing, other thing is tying it to the dualization and widening of the roads. For months, Stan and Mr. Jackson said that was not legal because you can't tie something that's not your control and has no timeline. Now we're doing that, and in good faith, you're going to do that, and in good faith, the township committee is going to do that. But every township resolution says on the bottom that if any part of this is considered not legal, just that falls off and everything else rolls through. So you're going to do it, and township in good faith is going to tie it. The lawyers or whoever, the homeowners associations are going to come and sue, say it's not legal, and they're going to pull that out, and everything else is going to roll through. I want a confirmation that no matter what, that clause will not be in there, or another way that we can figure out that it will be illegal in order that, and we cannot pull it out ever again, and it has to be there tied through and through. That was my last one comment. And my last comment is regarding, it's a whole different issue, I don't know if we want to open the can of worms, but it's sort of like where they offer you the threat of a school or something else, you know, on the cross Prospect Court, there is a part of land that did have a campus land law approval, where they can put almost up to 300 units apartments there. There's a Shiva plus a Mikfo plus the 300 units. Builders like, look, buyers want to buy it, they can roll right through with the whole block of people from Brooklyn willing to buy it right now. The opposite would be, that single family doesn't make sense, that's the direction he's going to go. If on that, on that part at least, I hate even saying it, but it's better of the two evils of poison, if they could get higher density on that part, it would actually improve density, even though it's technically going to, let's say duplexes or some other, you know, better density. But on the flip side, the other way is getting 300 units, and from a planning perspective, the 300 units will be tax exempt, the other ones will be ratables. So as much as it hurts me to say, in the big picture, it may be better off. And my other fear is usually, once you pierce this zone, Brian says, well, once you pierce this, the whole thing rolls. If it will be clarified clearly, this, yes, for this reason, but the rest of the zones, no, you know, in the big picture of things, it's increasing more than, I know we fought very hard for the R-12, and I appreciate all the efforts there, but faced with the choice, you know, unfortunately, it may be the better of the two options, and if it's possible to put something in there to make him happy that he doesn't go through with his current plan use, because at this point, he fixed any issues, he showed me of any of the things, and it's pretty much ready to roll unless the otherwise. So it's sort of the traditional threat of, you know, that we have a worse option, and it may be the better option in the situation, so.
Thank you very much. Next. Are you speaking to the public?
I'm an attorney speaking on behalf, Paul Schneider from Giordano Hall in Seesla, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Yeshiva Godola of South Jersey. Really picking up on the point the last speaker just made, we have the planned education campus approval for, as he said, approaching 300 units, four-story apartment buildings, you know, plus the school, plus the dormitory. We have that approval. And just a few months ago, this board recognized an extension of that approval, the vested rights for that approval that take us through June 30 of 2020. So no matter what the, how the master plan is changed or zoning ordinance has maybe changed, those approvals are vested. And, you know, we heard concerns from neighbors who are unhappy with that approval, concerned about the density, concerned about the traffic, and we had proposed as an alternative the R-75 zoning, in which case Yeshiva Godola would be going to abandon the planned campus and go with the R-75 zoning. It would make sense financially. We think the neighbors would prefer that to the four-story apartment buildings. And I understand that the board decided to make the change where things were being proposed as R-75 and to instead go back to R-12. But here's, I think, a case of unintended consequences. The R-12 zoning is not financially viable for this site. My client won't give up its vested approval for the four-story apartment buildings for the R-12 zoning. You know, what we're suggesting as a way to avoid really unintended consequence with this site is that the master plan have a provision that where there is an approved planned educational campus development, where there's an approval out there, that the master plan would encourage and recommend that the Uniform Development Ordinance, Section 180286, be amended to allow and in fact to encourage the developer to amend the existing approval, to have the housing consistent with the R-75 zone requirements instead of the multifamily four-story that's permitted and approved today. That would be our request, and those B simple lots then would also be taxable, and it would be a substantial reduction in density. You know, I think the intent of cutting back, and we're not suggesting that, you know, there be an abandonment of the going from R-75 and R-10 back to R-12, but we're saying in a situation where it's already approved for the four-story greater density, that consideration be made too, recommending an amendment to the UDO to allow that approval to be amended. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You hear this in turn, you're right?
Yes. Before we go to the next presenter. Can we, I left my Cox book out in the car, can we, can we take a recommendation like that and, is that mine?
You don't have the bookmarks.
Can we have a subsequent hearing and address a specific issue like the one that was just
Basically, you're talking about an amendment or?
Yeah, right. Can we, you know, the?
I told you about one area.
One area. Can, endorse. We can do that. It doesn't have to be every 10 years or every seven years, or whatever, we could do it.
No, you can always amend the master plan. It's a living document.
All right, because I think, okay, thank you.
Even if we accept it tonight, we can, we can, we can amend this page. Okay. Okay, Mr. Rose.
Good evening. My name is Michael J. Gross, Giordano Hall in Seesla, and I'm representing the owners of the Eagle Ridge Golf Course. My purpose this evening is really to just correct some of the revisionist history that's been testified to and correct some of the statements that have been made. The impression that some of the speakers have given this board is that somehow the zoning for the Eagle Ridge Golf Course has been proposed in secret with no input from the public. Let me say that the only change we're talking about this evening is a change to allow non-age restricted development at a lesser density than what is permitted now for age restricted development. 4.5 for age restricted, 3.6 for non-age restricted. That's what we're talking about. So that concept has been discussed for months by the.
Please shut the phones. Okay, please proceed.
By the advisory master plan committee and the density committee, which was alluded to previously, had at least three public hearings. The public was invited, it was noticed. If the public didn't appear, I don't know why, but certainly this was, this is a public, this is a public type of procedure. The comment was made that the open space for the golf course was used for the fairways development. We don't believe that is true. However, the 50% requirement for open space will be met by the Eagle Ridge development, of course, will be hopefully before the planning board sue. It is, we believe that the proposal, the proposed change is consistent with the smart growth plan because it does not in fact increase density, it decreases density. The threatened endangered species issue raised previously is a DEP issue, not really a planning board issue, but I can say that being involved in that process, the threatened endangered species area is only a small portion of the site, and the site can be developed without impacting any threatened endangered species. The change from 4.5 to 3.6 in fact would be less dense than the existing fairways adjacent development. We are not building on the landfill, there was a comment we're building on landfill, we are not. We conducted testing to make sure that we're not constructing on the landfill. The stormwater does not drain to Barnegat Bay, it in fact does not leave the site to any surface runoff at all. We wish there was some positive drainage, but it's not, it's basically a bowl, and the shovels in the ground, we've taken hundreds of those tests, and there is no contamination on the site that we're proposing to develop. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you swear a firm testimony before the board with the truth or not? I do. Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer, professional planner. I just wanted to add clarification on the Eagle Ridge that Mr. Gross just talked about. You heard planning testimony from one planner who said this was a zone change and said a lot of things. Obviously, you understand he's representing his client, who doesn't want development there, representing my client, who owns the property. First of all, the environmental sensitivity, most every application we bring in in Lakewood, the DEP, if you looked on their landscape map, says there's barred owls, or there's wetlands, or there's something. That doesn't make a whole property unbuildable. It's a property that's going to require, if there's any development approval on it, it requires a DEP approval, it requires a county approval, and it requires this planning board approval. And all the issues that they brought up about what we're not complying with need to be documented that we're doing it the right way before any of those approvals would be granted. And the appropriate place for that is at those application processes. It almost seems like this meeting tonight is the application for the Eagle Ridge Golf Course project, which of course it's not. I mean, there are comments that we're building on the dump, the DEP is not going to let us build on the dump, we're not going to pollute the Barnegat Bay, and the ordinance already allows for the R-40 a planned development with age restrictions. This process, which has gone on a long time, I've sat through most of the hearings, everybody that got up complains about Eagle Ridge and that any development's going to be there, so there was no secret about it. And it's, the only thing that's being changed is the conditional use that allows planned development in accordance with the recommendations, was to do that without the age restriction. And the board's last hearing, which is the new part of this, that was what was supposed to be talked about, the board lowered that density so that, as Mike pointed out, it would in fact be lower. The other thing I wanted to point out, because I have clients on some of the other applications where Mr. Hirsch talked about all the things that were being changed, my understanding when I heard the board last time was that they didn't want lower than R-12 on the roads that had congestion problems. The issues he was talking about were rezonings that were in accordance with the smart growth plan, and the township has adopted a smart growth plan, there were public hearings on that, and most of the changes that he indicated, all of them as far as I heard, without having the specifics, were in accordance with that smart growth plan, which is what the, this process seems to have been doing from the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else in the club who'd like to be heard? Just begin.
I stand an opportunity to correct, I believe Mr. Gross stated that when he, there was no public comment at the density subcommittee meetings regarding Eagle Ridge. I believe he's corrected, because I was at those meetings, and it was two and a half hours worth of comment, so.
Thank you very much.
Mike McLaughlin.
Okay. Please come forward. Please take the name to Lakewood.
Vic Malolo, 131.
Move down the mic, everybody can hear you.
Vic Malolo, 131 Skylark Drive, Lakewood, New Jersey.
Do you swear a firm testimony before the board with the truth or not?
I do. To the two gentlemen that just spoke about the environmentally sensitive areas, sorry for my voice, on the golf course, there are a few areas like that. Sure, it only takes up a certain amount of acreage, but I'd like to know, how do you tell the bird to stay in this acre and not go to that acre? It's impossible. There's four lakes. There's four lakes in, on Eagle Ridge. And a lot of birds, different types of birds, blue herrings, white herrings go there, and they're in and out of the different lakes. They do not stay in one specific area. And to the guy that said he, the organization that said they dug hundreds of test holes, that's, that's baloney, because I was there when they dug holes, and they said they went down 40 feet on a few of the holes there, and the deepest one that they went on was only 27 feet, and that was dry, only because they were 40-foot high in elevation when they dug that hole. Other holes that they dug were only 17 feet, and I measured all of them. And I have documentation of when I was there and how deep the holes were. And for these guys to come up and say they dug so deep, it's because the elevation on holds, number four and three are the highest elevations on that particular nine holds. You have three different sets of holds on Eagle Ridge, nine, you know, nine holds each. Where they took most of our information was on the highest elevation on the golf course. So naturally, they're going to say, hey, they went down 40 feet. But they're not telling you when they were right in back of my house, because I live on the golf course, they didn't mention that they went down two and a half feet and they hit wet sand. Nobody ever mentions that. They only tell you about the dry areas and stuff they went through.
Thank you.
That's all. Thank you.
Good evening. Hi. Pauline Schredder, S-C-I-A-R-R-E-T-T-A, 33 Oakmont Road.
Do you swear a firm testimony before the board with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes. Okay, I have two issues that I want to talk about. The first issue is, I know nothing about the numbers of this being changed, that being changed, but the one constant thing that I hear here for the past couple of meetings that I've come to is that all of Lakewood, not just the fairways, or not just the orthodox, but all of Lakewood is sick and tired of all of the building that's going on and all of the congestion. It's not going to get better, it's going to get worse. And by allowing the golf course to be developed onto Cross Road, because that's the only exit that they can have, Cross Street, I'm sorry, it's so difficult. How are you going to get all the cars and the traffic and the school buses? And I understand they're building further down a supermarket, and there are thousands of houses being built already. I think enough is enough. And really, the people here are saying enough is enough. And the developers, of course, they're going to come up with these other stories because that's what they are, developers. They're in for the money. They're not in for the people that live in this town. Your responsibility, how I feel, is that you have a responsibility to the people that are already living here, not for the people that might come and live here. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Just ten seconds. To clarify, my name was used a minute ago by Mr., my name's Aaron Hersh. Just to clarify, there are a number of zone changes on Chestnut that are not, have not been any ordinances passed. They are currently far larger, less dense areas. We are proposing tremendously, so that's that.
Thank you. Thank you. For the next. Please take your end of the record.
Thank you. My name is Jerry Horn, and my address is 8 Pine Valley Court in Lakewood. I do. I would just like to take issue with one of Mr. Flannery's comments, that the process through which the sale of the golf course was done without the residents of the fairways knowing about it. He seemed to make it, he tried to make it sound like there was sunshine glowing over the, over the transaction, when in fact it was done in secret. No one who tried to buy a house in the master section, which is the newest section of the fairways, was informed that the golf course, the adjoining golf course, was going to be sold. No one who lived, lives in the regular section of the fairways, the older section, was informed that the golf course was going to be sold by the Cokes, was informed by the Cokes that this was going to be done, that their property values may be slashed, and that their way of life was going to be deteriorating due to the increasing congestion and traffic. You speak about, the planner speaks about the ideal situation, utopian city, where people walk to stores and, and there's a plaza, and that exists in this area of Lakewood, but it's not meant to exist in the fairways and the over 55 communities. We don't walk to stores. We drive everywhere, those of us who can drive. The streets in the fairways are named after golf courses. Why? Because it's a golf-themed over 55 and over community. Houses are on the golf course. They paid extra for that. And you make it sound as if, well, that we just came upon this, this tract of land and we're going to, we're going to put houses on it, no matter what. And it seems like that may be done eventually, but it's a disgrace, the way it's been done and the way it's being done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Anybody else in the panel who would like to begin? Please come forward. Anybody? Please take your end of the record.
Patty Robinson, 79, Eagle Ridge Circle, Lakewood. Yes. At the last meeting, you discussed making a revision to the master plan that no duplexes or triplexes would be built along Cross Street until the roads were changed. Then it was changed at the end of the meeting, that it would be west of Fair Day, I believe it was, and then it was at the triangle. But you weren't including that very crucial part of Cross Street that includes Eagle Ridge Golf Course. You have the plans in front of you of where they want to build numerous, like 900 duplexes and triplexes on the golf course, that all that traffic would empty out onto Cross Street. For the planner who says that that's not going to cause more congestion, that's not more density, what is he talking about? 900 duplexes and triplexes? If you're going to approve anything or change anything on the master plan, it should be that there's no duplexes or triplexes at all on all of Cross Street. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please take your end of the record.
Thomas Rosenberg. Can I have your response? Thomas, T-H-O-M-A-S-R-O-S-E-N-B-E-R-G. Yes. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. I was sitting in the audience for listening, and it seems like we're taking a golf course that's a park, that's not zoned for anything, and it's zoned just for pleasure, and we're going and we're building over there, houses for the growth of Lakewood, and that sounds terrible. Just want to clarify, and that's known to the board, and what Mr. Flannery and Mr. Gross mentioned over here before, Eagle Ridge is currently zoned for senior development, the same as you have, as the township zones for the hundreds of hundreds of a beautiful senior community. That's what it's zoned for. Currently, if the developers want to go and build, that's where they can go and build and bring here 3, 400, 500 more beautiful seniors that they can look up to. But the case is that there isn't need for seniors, so the only thing that they're asking is to lift the restriction from seniors and build it for children that are grown up in this town. So just to clear everything and make it clear, now, understand, there's a lot of people in the room that have concerns about endangered species, and I think it's something to be very concerned and to look into, but I just want to tell you, I have 10 beautiful kids. They're also beautiful kids, almost as beautiful as those birds that are flying around, and they also need a place where to live. So I think we're to make place for both, for the kids that are grown up in the town, and we have to widen the roads, and we have to make sure that congestion gets eased, that's a problem that everybody has, but I think everything should be taken in consideration, not only the endangered species. And I think it's time to raise the restriction from old age and to look what 90% of this town needs. And that is, we need housing. Yes, we do need housing, as much as we need housing for our senior community, that they have the most dense zoning in Lakewood. The most dense zoning in Lakewood is the senior community. We're just asking for part of it. We're just asking for part of it to be put for the children, the beautiful children, and it's beautiful that the kind of life should live next to the senior community so they have whom to look up to. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. No, you're, you're there. Please have a seat. Please have a seat. No, it's closed.
Can you please, sir, you had your chance.
You spoke twice.
Please come up, it's your turn, sir. Please come up.
Okay.
We can't have good things fighting back and forth. Sir, please come up to the microphone. Sir, please state your name and address.
My name is Gershon Zilber.
You're speaking to the microphone.
My name is Gershon Zilber. I live in 42 Yarra Drive, Lakewood.
Do you swear a firm testimony before the board with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Your audience, please be quiet.
The gentleman--
You're speaking to the microphone.
I'd like to say that I have no problem with Eagle Ridge being developed and having houses, but I would like to affirm that I saw the change on the master plan that said that about dualizing roads, that it's going to be dualized, it's going to be dualized or widened, which means that anybody can come and say, okay, we widen it in one foot and that's enough, or we widen with the middle, with the turning lane, which is enough. Now, when you come to bring more traffic, whether it's 900 duplexes or whatever it is, don't forget that every house of this duplexes will have a basement tenant, and that's going to be like four, at least four cars per household, and this is a lot of traffic, which is good. They're going to pay taxes, but at the same time, we have to make sure that the roads are dualized. The cross street is dualized, not just from, I don't remember, from where to where it says, but all the way through, so the traffic won't affect anybody in the area. I understand that what Mr. Rosenberg said, that he has 10 kids and, and of course, it's better, he wants, the house should be for people with kids growing up and not just elderly. Fine, this is the market, it's business. But at the same time, if the roads are not dualized, if the roads are not widened, then the whole pleasure of living in a township goes away with it. So if developers want to make money, that's their right. They want a land, they want to make money, they want to develop, they want to bring more people. That's their right, and I'm 100% agreeing with that. The only problem is, you, the township members, you need to make sure that the roads will either widen or dualize so they will be able to feed pleasantries without traffic, all those new coming, coming members of this community would like to come. Because without making the roads wider on both sides, it's just like bringing more traffic. So you want to bring more people? Go ahead, bring as many people as you want, but make it that the roads will be able to handle it before you approve plans to bring more people.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for listening.
Anybody else who'd like to begin?
Chairman Michelle Giannato, may I please have one moment just to correct what I think is an unfortunate error that was introduced at the end of these proceedings? Several witnesses stated, or an attorney and Mr. Flannery stated, that this is already zoned for adult housing for senior citizens. It is not. Under the R40 provisions of the Unified Development Ordinance, cluster development is permitted only if it's designated on the zoning map as R40/20, and this is, and Eagle Ridge is not. Secondly, there is only planned affordable residential development that is also permitted. So that, there is no provision right now to allow senior housing there, and it is not designated as R40/20.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask, I have a question.
Yeah, Mr.--
We can't have, you're ready to testify.
She just said that what I said--
I'm going to ask Mr. Trustcott.
Okay.
At the right time, Mr. Flannery.
Okay, Mr. Gromberg, you have a question?
At the last meeting, I believe the motion was for Eagle Ridge to, that if the age restriction was lifted to make it R12, which I understood to me that does not allow duplexes, R12 does not allow duplexes, oh, is this allowing duplexes in the Eagle Ridge?
Let's pick in a second. Let me just close the call.
We have to make this right.
One second.
And, and Mr., don't let me forget to ask you about what Mr. Flannery and Ms. Giannato want to clarify what the current zone is.
And you'll answer Mr. Gromberg also his question.
Okay, sir, just state your name and address.
Good evening. Bob Miller, 117 Skyline Drive, been here before, know the name.
Do you swear a firm testimony--
I swear. How much is a life worth? I just want to ask one question. How much is a life worth?
One sec, she has a question.
I'm sorry.
Please proceed.
No, no, you're, Mr. Jackson, whatever you--
You want to refer me, you want--
Excuse me?
Just please proceed, we're good.
How, how much is a life worth? Can anybody here answer the question? I want to know how much a life is worth. Because you're holding that life in your hands by approving high density. What's going to happen is there's going to be children killed in this town? There's going to be adults killed in this town? You're throwing away safety and the importance of everyone in Lakewood's life for a builder to make some money who lives in another town so that he could just build here and run away? You don't want it in his town. Who's putting it here? And I think you all understood this, and I thought last time we had this meeting, it was very clear on how you felt, and, and I felt real good leaving the meeting, because I felt that you guys understood being a resident of this town to protect this town. And you seem to be firm on that, and I heard some very good testimony to that fact, and now all of a sudden, things have changed, and I'd like to know why, why have they changed? Who is controlling? Who's the puppeteer? Who is doing all this? It's, it's obvious that there's some body running this board, and it's not the board themselves. So who, who's in charge? Can I have an answer?
Sir, at the end, just to clarify, Mr. Ford will vote. We saw from the last time, they, they listen and they take into account. This isn't a debate back and forth, and we can't have counterpoint coming.
Oh, yeah, but the whole issue is--
Do you have any comments related to--
Okay, is this about the master plan? Am I in the right place? Is this about a master plan? Of course it is. And if it's about a master plan, it has to do with the rise of the community, and that's why you put up a master plan, so that it's done smartly with safety involved and everything else that we've talked about here this evening and for the past few evenings, or maybe more than few. And I think that at this point in time, before you make a decision, you really need to do a heartfelt decision. You have to search yourself and you ask, is this for the benefit of the community, for the folks that are living here already? That's all I ask. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody else who'd like to begin? Please come forward. Please take your end of the record.
Emilio Di Roscio.
Please spell your name.
D for David, E capital, R-I-S-S-I-O.
Do you swear a firm testimony before the board with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please, please speak into the microphone.
It's common knowledge that the state of New Jersey has the biggest infrastructure problem facing them today, and they have no answers. I'd like to know from you, where it is in the master plan to plan to fix the infrastructure of Lakewood. Tell me what page it's on, and how much it's going to cost, and who will pay for it. Is that in the master plan?
Sir, this is a comment.
And I'm, and I'm commenting, I'm commenting on the master plan.
Thank you.
I would like to know what page in the master plan there was provisions for the infrastructure of Lakewood before they start building. Is there a page? That's the question.
It's under, it was made public.
I'm sorry?
It was made public.
You can't tell me the page?
We can't be cross-examined.
Well, all I want to know is what page is in the master plan, has that information for the infrastructure-- for the infrastructure repair of Lakewood?
It's in there.
Yeah, what page?
I don't know.
What do you mean? The plan it all? There's a plan in it? What page has got the information for the repair of the infrastructure?
There's an entire section on traffic improvements.
I'm sorry?
There's an entire section on traffic improvements. If you read the, the main content page, it'll tell you which section of...
Does it say who will pay for it, and when will it be done?
Probably not.
What page is it?
We spoke all about this in the last few meetings, and we said...
I've been here every meeting.
Okay, so we said...
The meantime, all I'm hearing is about...
Sir, do you have any more comments?
I don't, yeah, I have another comment.
Please make your comments.
The gentleman mentioned about, we're not going to stop building for an hour. Does a snake have precedence over an hour? Because in Ocean County in Tom's River, they stopped building because they discovered a snake in Tom's River. That's Ocean County, Southern County. Why does a snake have precedence over an hour?
Master plan.
I'm sorry?
Do you have any comments regarding the revisions?
We said that he could build because of an hour. You can't, you can't stop building because of an hour.
Okay, thank you. That's the state.
Thank you.
That's not the press.
Don't have any to do with you?
That's a little sticky.
Are you willing to build on the gas horse?
Okay, thank you, I got to this. Anybody else who'd like to plug their mic, please come forward. Please state your name for the record.
Ellie Goldring, G-O-L-D-R-I-N-G. I've been in this town for eighteen years.
Sir, do you swear a firm testament or give before the court with the truth?
Yes, I do. Seventeen Arrosa, off of Route Nine. I've been in this town for eighteen years, and I just want to mention, someone of the seniors mentioned earlier, that they moved to the senior development for the quality of life. And a lot of us that are living here with the large families are also looking for that quality of life for our children for the years to come. The building is necessary, it has to be done smart, and we appreciate the housing to go through.
Thank you very much. Anybody else who'd like to plug their mic? Say one, or close it to the public. Okay, now, Mr. Simpson, I think you should answer.
The first thing I'd like to know, as you heard, Mr. Truscott, you've heard the comment by Ms. Donato about the present zoning is, Mr. Flannery got up, I said that I would indicate...
Lights on.
The red light's on, but how's that better? Can you comment on that, Mr. Truscott?
As she got it, it's zoned R forty, and I think she's, the question is about permitted uses, and I have a list of permitted uses in the ordinance from UDL.
Which is currently permitted, the way it is.
Are currently permitted, yes. Single-family detached housing, places of worship, I'm just abbreviating here, places of worship, public and private schools, and lastly, planned affordable residential developments. And that's, and then there are conditional uses, which I think you're just interested in, permitted principal uses at this time, right?
Okay, so the revisions that were proposed as a result of the board's deliberations from the last meeting, can you summarize those?
Is that more density or less density, but it's currently...
Let me just get to that specific section. The recommendation of the prior version was, I read it, amendment of the R forty residential zone to permit planned use on parcels of one hundred acres or more with a maximum density of, and previously it was four point five units per acre, and the board asked at the last meeting that we try and change the unity to, in accordance with the R twelve, which is equivalent of three point six units per acre.
Does your report, your report specifically references three point six units per acre?
Yes.
I, I think there's a concern that the three point six units per acre, and this might have been in some of the comments from some of the people tonight, that that three point six units per acre could possibly result in a greater density than the R, what was it, twelve or R twenty?
R twelve.
R twelve. So what the concern is, let me finish.
Yeah, I'm sorry, John.
This is for Marty. What the concern is, is we want to make sure that that verbiage is clarified, so that in accordance with the R twelve zoning, that that three point six is based on usable acreages, so that environmentally constrained wetlands, the streets, because as you know, the MLUL talks about density in terms of the original parcel. So what I think the concern of some of the board members are and some of the public is that the, it would be the net usable density, and I think that's consistent with what the board said next time, so I just want to make sure that that's what that means.
Currently, it's the... I don't know. Any questions?
Currently, I'm just reading off the, it's based on gross acres of the adult community tracked, exclusive of commercial areas.
The four point five that's currently alone is an adult area.
That's correct.
Okay.
Currently.
And, and, you know, I know Mr. Fulman had mentioned, maybe he had concerns about that the usable acreage. Yeah. And I think that, was that what the board...
Just want to ask you again, the, currently the zone allows, it allows for the density to be calculated by the gross area, not by the net available acres, by the gross acreage?
I believe that's correct. And, and just to clarify...
I understand.
Yeah, just to clarify, and Mr. Truscott to confirm, the adult communities are under the conditional use requirements, if I recall correctly.
That's correct.
Yes, so it's, it's a permitted conditional use within, within the district. Conditions are established, one of those conditions being the density which is established at four point five units of gross density, which is, it's typical. Now, the board and the governing body, the township committee, has, because it's a planned development, has certain flexibility to be able to define the way that density is calculated on a tract basis and within sub-areas within the, within the tract. So you can define various sub-areas to be developed portions versus preserved areas. So you can have a distribution of densities that vary differently from the overall gross area of the tract. Essentially, that's, you can do that in a planned development. So there would be, if the board is recommending it, and the township committee agrees, there is nothing wrong with providing for that density being, being applied to the, to the developable portions of the tract versus the non-developable.
I want to hear what the board says.
I just want to know, getting back to that question we asked a couple of weeks ago and a couple of weeks before that, do you have a number yet of how many houses we're talking about yet?
A number of houses in which, for which areas?
That the zone changes, the new density will allow that we're talking about, we're going to be building another ten, twenty, thirty thousand ounces, or are we still to get to that?
No, well, we, we began doing an evaluation of that, looking at all the different zone changes, those areas that both were changed to have lower densities, and those that are being changed to have higher densities. And I believe, and Mr. Truscott correctly informed me, it's about, I think, the order of magnitude is around five hundred houses in total, when you, when you look at it in terms of the net change between gross and...
Okay, and how many houses are we talking about in total?
It's about five hundred.
How many houses are we building?
Oh, I don't know, I mean, what do you mean by building?
How many houses can we build?
You mean, under current zoning, how many houses can we build?
You did, you calculated how density zones and undensity zones, and you came up, the difference is around five hundred, the houses more.
Yeah.
What's the total building that's permitted?
I don't have that, but, and just let me clarify too, which I think is important to, to understand that. If you're looking at just the areas where the master plan recommends changes, and you have that list of the proposed changes, in some areas, there is no change because it just recognizes what's there already. In other cases, it's, it's a change, but it's not really affecting the number of residential uses, residential uses in that area. There's some areas where you're increasing densities, going from R forty to R twelve. There are other areas where actually reducing densities in areas that, that are in, saying that previously were in the R forty, R twenty area, that are outside of the sewer service area, and now we're reducing down that density. So when you take a look at all those, and we just looked at, we were just looking at the, where the changes are being made, not the township in its entirety.
So you don't look at the whole township?
Well, that wasn't the question you had previously asked.
So you look at the whole township, how many more houses are we building?
Well, again, you say, how many more houses are we building? It, it, under current zoning, how many more houses, where the houses are going? I mean, that's, that's, that's a different question, and we didn't, we didn't analyze that. But I mean, we looked specifically, we looked, we looked specifically at those areas where, where the changes were being made, which is where the...
Okay, changes that being made to allow more density, how many more houses over there are we building?
Over where?
The new, in the new dense areas.
Do you have that list yet?
Is it five hundred? Yeah.
You said the difference between taking away density and adding density, the difference is five hundred more, but how about if you wouldn't take away, you wouldn't be taking away the density, leave the density the way it was? Only the part that you're adding more density, how many more houses are we building?
Don't know if we have that list here. Yeah, I mean, we could provide that, but we don't have that list with us.
That was the question we asked three meetings ago, last meeting. That's great. Also, one of the things I asked, that no area should be less than twelve thousand R twelves. Our M zone, that A five, what was that zone? Where's the B five A? Those zones allow way more density than anything.
Are you suggesting that they be changed to R twelve?
That, that's what we...
I don't think that was the direction of the board, but the board, you know, is looking to change all those districts to R twelve. That's a, that's a pretty substantial change.
Also, I just, like, after the last time you said that the whole core should be at R twelve, I just wonder how you came back from us relating that we should have R twelve, had you come back and write in the plan that it should be three point six per acre? Was that something you misunderstood in the motion? Like, had that, had that worked? Who told you to write that?
Well, our, our understanding of the, the board's direction was to cap the density or really reduce it from the four point five, which was specified in the master plan, to three point six, which was an equivalence to R twelve. That is, it, and Mr. Fulman, that was, Mr. Fulman, can I answer the question? That was specifically the direction that we received from the board, and the board can, can convey to us any other, if they felt that that was incorrect, they can certainly correct it. If you have a different direction, if you want to step to, to undertake...
I think it was pretty clear last time, and I think you, you're being directed by influences outside of this actual board.
Actually, that's, that is, that is completely wrong.
Okay, I mean, it would just be a little interesting. Also, we asked for the roads to be dualized and widened.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Fulman, Mr. Fulman, what is, Mr. Fulman, what is the implication there?
I don't know, I just want to know, who told you to write three point six when we said R twelve?
That we received the direction from the planning board at the last meeting.
And it was R twelve. I was, I was seconded, it was made the motion.
Let me just ask you a question, is there a difference between R twelve and three point six per acre?
Yes.
That, that's, the three point six is an equivalent density to the R twelve, and that was very specific, that was very specific to the board.
I'm trying to understand, Mr. Fulman, what's the difference?
Does three point six allow duplexes?
Yes, any of the, any of the, any of the residential types that would be permitted in that condition of use would be permitted.
So the motion was made, and I seconded the motion, the motion was for R twelve single-family houses.
Well, I, and, and Mr. Fulman...
I'm not saying I have a problem with three point six. All I'm saying is I want to understand how that happened, because there was around sixteen motions, and it was back and forth, and it wasn't seconded, and we came out, and we finalized a motion, and...
Mr. Fulman, if, and we can look at the minutes of the meeting, but specifically, there was a reference to the, the change in the density to an equivalent density under the R twelve. It wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't recommended.
So I want to try to correct this. If the rest of the board is in accord with Mr., with Mr. Fulman's assessment that this should be R twelve single-family only, or single-family doesn't mean...
We'll take a poll, sir.
Let's say that's what the board did intend mean, and we can confirm that. What would we do to, to fix that? Would we just have to take across the R...
That's, that's right, simply, we're, I just want to make it very, very clear here, and very, very clear, Mr. Fulman, that we are following the direction of the board. If we misunderstood the direction of the board, and the board has a different perspective than what was conveyed to us at the last meeting, we will make that change. We are working, we are your professionals, we're working for you, and we are...
I, I, it doesn't seem that way. I've been several times...
One other time, one other time, please.
Mr. Fulman, Mr. Fulman, I don't...
Over and over.
Mr. Fulman?
Mr. Schlohaka, please let Mr. Fulman say what he's...
We come over here with only ones here that don't get paid. We do this, we volunteer, and to come back after you make a motion, if they're going through this whole craziness, that things we say, it's just, it's not cool.
It, it, Mr. Fulman, I understand there are a lot of moving parts to this. I know there's a lot of emotion, there's a lot of people very polarized on a lot of the issues, and, you know, sometimes it's hard for the planner to synthesize the directions from eight or nine different people and capture exactly, which is why we go through this process. So, you know, I, I think it's good, and I think it's important that we're dialing this in a little, and Mr. Schlohaka, please just have some understanding, you know, these are, there's a lot of time and effort put into this, and I understand everybody's frustration, so...
And Mr. Jackson, I appreciate that, and I do appreciate the fact that the board has...
Mr. Hershwood's accused me of living in Point Pleasant.
Point Pleasant is a very nice community, Mr. Jackson.
We, we said it should be dualized and widened.
But Mr. Fulman, can I just respond, because I wanted to, to sort of numerate on Mr. Jackson's comment. But what I'm, what I'm, what I'm going to suggest to the board is, and I want to be very, very clear, that to the extent that there are dialogue and discussion with the board, we try our best in terms of evaluating and interpreting that, there is no other inputs. I want to make it clear, and I want to make it on the record, that there is no other inputs or no other perspective that was, has been added or, or conveyed to us, other than what has been the dialogue before this board, and I think it's very...
Right, we appreciate that. This is a robust public dialogue, so unfortunately, we can't do...
Mr. Fulman, going back to the three point six, you would have the issue of the density is not, and density is not more than three point six, you would have the issue that there would be a duplexment?
It was R twelve single-family, so how, how does that work? That's completely not the motion that was made.
The recommendation, I think, that you were making was that where it's R twelve single-family, that would be exactly what it says, single-family, there would be no overriding provisions that allow duplexes or whatever.
That was the motion that was made, so I'm...
So technically, if we were allowed, this has been a new motion?
So you, it would have to be a new motion, because our, the motion that was made and was seconded and that we voted on was for R twelve single-family. That was the motion.
Shh. No screaming, please. Any other comments?
And also, it was about dualizing and widening cross-street. It wasn't one or the other, it wasn't just widening like somebody said, you just put onto it and then calling it a day. And, you know, the, the committee, I guess, could do whatever they want to do, but not, no ordinance should be gone, no ordinance should go into effect till the actual roads are widened, and I don't know if they could bypass any of this, and they could stop building before this stuff is done, but, you know, myself, as a coordinator, I'll make it very clear that there's no way that I would approve a motion in any way, shape, or form to go through without this. So if there's no dualization and widening, the motion, my motion would be to turn the whole thing down.
Mr. Fulman, I spoke to the mayor, and he told me that the direction of the legal ordinance is...
I've heard right and left, I've heard yes and no.
I've seen the mayor, please.
Can I just, I just want to clarify, what, and, and Mr. Fulman, I appreciate what you're saying, just to the other members of the board, again, the, the master plan is a recommendation to the governing body. The governing body can override it, and, and there are enhanced requirements when an ordinance is enacted that is not consistent with the master plan. When that happens, the governing body has to acknowledge it's not consistent with the master plan, has to give reasons, and then I believe that the voting requirements, I master plan, has to give reasons, and then I believe that the voting requirements, I defer to Mr. Sheikar on this, but there's enhanced voting requirements in that it must be a majority of the governing body's quorum. So, it makes it more of a stringent process, yes. So, you know, whether you adopt a master plan or whether you don't adopt a master plan, the governing body is still the one with the ultimate responsibility to enacting the ordinances. And what happens if you don't have a master plan is that a developer or anyone else can go to court and object to it and say that our zoning is not reasonable because there's no master plan. That's current. So, this process is required, there are significant consequences if it's not adopted, and there are significant consequences once it is adopted. So, you know, Mr. Fulman, I appreciate your concern that it could be overridden, but the best you can do is make a recommendation, and then, you know, the governing body still has the ability to go beyond it, and, you know, ideally, they will not, they'll take into account what the master plan provides.
Hopefully, otherwise, I just wanted to know that it's not the planning board that allowed it.
And that's probably why they have to, that's probably why the legislative alignment says they have to make a statement and explain it and require additional...
The impact fee has to be every zone in town.
We made that one as well.
That's most part of it.
And it's only in two zones currently.
Well, now, it's, you want it township-wide, which is our strong recommendation to the board and to the...
And that was part of the original motion.
So, any approvals should have that in mind.
Yes.
It should not be grandfathered in that they don't have it approved before...
Any more implications?
Well, you know, obviously, that it's important for the board to adopt the master plan and for the township committee to as quickly as it possibly can adopt those ordinances. Obviously, anything that gets approved in other sections other than the two districts where the TID is in place, currently in place, would not be subject to the TID until the ordinance is adopted. I do want to also say that with regards to the, any of the language in that we have provided, the amended language that we provided to the board that was available to the public, if there was some mischaracterization or we made an error in presenting the intent of the board, it was clearly unintentional, and you obviously have the opportunity to clarify that or to do whatever, make up any other changes that you want, and that includes any language with respect to the dualization and widening. We did our best to be able to capture that, and obviously, this...
There are testimonies of...
Yes, and this board has the right to have the final version.
Jackson should not stop at Massachusetts.
You're talking about Cross Street, just clear.
Cross Street, at least it's...
That's worthless.
Okay, thank you.
If I can just recap what Mr. Fulman has said, I think he, in his view anyway, the R12 and the 3.6 units per acre should be fixed so that it's R12, single-family, and single-family means not a duplex, it means, you know, the one unit per lot. That's what Mr. Fulman says, I don't know how the board feels.
I usually don't make mistakes, you can ask my wife, but you could look that up in the minutes, and if not, we just need another motion. If that wasn't what the board had in mind, I think another motion has to be made.
And I'm just saying this because no one else has spoken yet, and I just got through the other one, so we had that was number one, Mr. Fulman. Number two was the dualization and widening. Number three was, what street did you want to go all the way through to Route 9?
Cross Street.
Cross Street, all the way through to Route 9, and number four were that the impact fees would be applicable to every zone.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
I think one of the streets that we mentioned was Prospect Street, which is not included here in the list of dualization.
I don't think Prospect was, Paul's Pine Street, we said...
I believe it was Prospect.
We said Pine Street.
We said Pine.
That's what we said.
We said Prospect also.
Okay. Mr. Fulman, you have a question?
No, I just wanted to point that Mr. Fulman said he doesn't necessarily have a problem with 3.6, his problem was where, how it got changed. I think he may go along with the 3.6, I just want to clarify, John, when you were summarizing...
Well, you can make it R12, which is what I think Mr. Fulman...
One thing to keep in mind also is that this recommendation, when you have tracts of contiguous undeveloped acreage, 100 acres or more, it doesn't just pertain to the Eagle Ridge Golf Course, it pertains to, I think there's two other golf courses in town that this pertains to, and it pertains to possibly some other areas. So, I think to keep in mind that if we're not talking about Eagle Ridge Golf Course specifically, we're talking about other areas as well, so I think that whatever we do for one, we should do for all of them, that's something to keep in mind.
But on that note, I think the master plan just recommends for anything that's in the R40, you correct me if I'm wrong, Marty, this 100-acre tract is only for someone that's in the R40 zone.
Yeah, that's correct.
And the other ones are also R40?
As far as I know, there are other, Wood Lake Golf Course is also an R40, for example. Is that not true? Okay, maybe it's not true, all right. Did I stand correct? Thank you.
I just have a question, I'm the attorney for Eagle Ridge, saying that actually, the seniors take up more space. We don't have children, we don't go up two floors, we don't have four cars, how do you say we take up more space? Your county foot space, which is no problem, your density is going to be greater, you're going to have thousands of cars, maybe 30,000 children based on duplex and triplex. Listen, I mentioned, you're making the figures tainted in your direction.
Okay, thank you. Any other board members, any questions?
Yeah, I just want to know, the question I asked earlier was that we are allowing duplexes there?
There's a question, we're wondering that. There are questions about how to build a single-family, or to have the density of R12, and then we allow duplexes. And if you allow duplex, you cannot build anywhere near them. If it's 3.6, a duplex is considered to, am I correct, is that?
That is correct.
Okay.
And under the current ordinance and the conditional uses, it allows for a mix of residential types of uses, not just detached?
Yes, the current ordinance does provide a mix of residential uses.
So, the current ordinance allows for multifamily housing, but only 55 and over? Is that...
That's right.
And the higher density?
That hasn't been my understanding, where we allow single-family homes, you're allowed to have a basement apartment, so, you know, that doesn't, that doesn't get calculated into the density for some reason, so... No, I... I thought what your question was, was you said, was, you know...
Duplex, I meant twin houses.
He meant detached house.
A duplex shouldn't affect the density, but duplexes are allowed on a single-family lot.
John, I think essentially the issue is if we were going with a 3.6 units per acre, if you were building one single-family house, you would need 12,000 square feet. If you were not restricting the use types and duplexes were permitted to build one duplex building, you would need 24,000 square feet of property, to keep with the density, but not restrict the usage.
Mr. Jackson, the same amount of basements as you in a single-family or duplex, as long as we don't go over the density of 3.6, which I just clarified. I understand, I understand, but on 3.6, even if you go with duplexes, you can't have more, a duplex is two houses, it's not two singles.
The overall yield is not going to be more than...
Overall yield, there's no more.
The overall yield, but I think that has to be clarified, that has to be expressly stated, that no matter what, the density can't go past that.
What's the current density in senior housing?
It's 4.5. Forty's 4.5, drawing the straight.
Maybe I'm wrong, I've got a question for you. You're being asked to vote on the master plan, but what I'm saying, I don't know what I'm voting for. It just seems it's confusion, the golf course, which is a big piece of property, we don't know what's going to go there. The courts are waiting for papers, we're asking what size, is it R12, is it R20? I'd just say, how could I vote for something and I don't know what it is?
I think it's very clear, even though we go 3.6 or R12, you cannot build on an acre more than three and a half houses, which is, in other words, it's worth being, it's the 12,000 square...
It just seems there's a lot of questions that haven't been answered.
Mr. Fulman, you have a question?
I just want to go down, like, just a couple of things. So, first of all, we spoke about how with the, in the 100 acres, we're going to be talking about that other people can't get together, you're going to put a language in there that it has to be owned by one entity, or it has to be undeveloped, or whatever it may be, just it can't be that five blocks of people get together.
Undeveloped property, it should be undeveloped property.
But I'm just concerned if you say undeveloped property, is a golf course called developed or not? So, we're obviously not calling a golf course developed.
Why can't you say what's currently, like, open land? Okay, so what's your recommendation, again?
I don't know, I'm going to wait for the plan to figure something out. In addition, I went over to you before regarding you mistake in the R40, do we need it on the record that there was a... My concern is that people get hurt, and they currently have zoning, it could be an R10 and R12, and I think mistakenly it was made a R40. I just want, like, on the record, that's going to be fixed. There's a certain block that I came over to you before about. I just don't want anyone to get hurt because of me, and they bought a piece of property, and we're saying now R40. Sorry, you put a fine.
Which property are you talking about?
Maybe you could put that on the record, because you asked us prior to the meeting about that.
So, you have the block number, do you remember what the block number was?
It's on...
And it was currently what?
It was, I think it was R10, and it got turned into an R40.
Yeah, there's an area, just for the record, and I think the zoning recommendation, Marty, which is that number, number 23, I believe it is?
We changed that to no...
That's underweight, but, yeah, let me just, that's the amount, the board hasn't seen that.
Okay, no, but I mean, the zoning recommendation, the number of the zoning recommendation.
She said this area was R10, and it goes to R40, it's outside the sewer area, this is in the sewer area.
If it's within the sewer service area, then it should be what currently is, yes.
This is an area that's proximate to Kettle Creek, it's also proximate to the recreation facility.
Mr. Flansbury just said that it's in the sewer zone.
Yeah, and as clarification, as a clarification, and this is an area to the south of Oak Street, currently zoned R10. If, my understanding, and again, from the direction of the board, the board's direction on this, is that if it's, if it is within the existing sewer service area, it should remain in the R10...
The way it is, we'll change to it.
Yeah, exactly, and then if it's not in the sewer service area, then it would be changed to the R40. Okay, that's, I want to make sure we understand that.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I want to talk about, I took some notes as people were talking, and as these were coming to memory earlier, there was an attorney, maybe someone else that got up and spoke about where there is currently a campus zoning, and allowing the R75 there, which would approximately cut the density in half, and going along with what my motion was last time, in trying to decrease the density off Cross Street, I'd really like some language, and I have to be very careful, because I don't want anyone to take advantage of this in the future, but I think if a campus, we should recommend that in the campus ordinance, if the board members feel...
Which is currently a campus ordinance.
Something that currently has campus order designation, if the person wants to come for R75, which is, which is going to decrease the density tremendously, we should allow it. Now, I don't want someone coming and getting campus approval, turning around the next day and getting R75 zoning, so it has to be as of the date of this master plan, whoever has, if there is an area, and it's just that area, just those blocks that have the campus zoning, it should allow R75.
And just to clarify...
Which is what I was saying.
Just to clarify...
Okay, I need to be on record.
Yeah, to be clear, for the record, that what you're suggesting is that in any area within the Cross Street core, that Cross Street triangle, not, you don't want it township-wide, you're just looking at one specific area.
I think township-wide, if there's any other area that's a campus, it's not an area.
Okay, so you're, so you're, any place where it had been permitted by, or approved, currently approved, prior to the adoption of the master plan?
Basically, Mr. Flansbury, you're saying that we're going down the city tremendously.
From the...
From the campus ordinance.
But I want to make sure that we're clear...
You have to be very careful with that also, because there are some people that already started building on part of their campus approval, so they built the school, but they didn't build the housing. So, it really should be, anyone that did not build yet with their campus ordinance approval, but has the approval, and they want to do R75, and they want R75 zoning, it should be allowed for them.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, my calculation is it's cutting down, after the basement, something like 100 units, and when I made my motion last time, it cut that out, and that was not my intention, I would rather have less density.
I have a question about that campus. The campus approval, is it subject to any vacation of roads?
No, not that I know of.
I'm not familiar, I, maybe if there is someone in the...
It was.
But it was vacated, I don't know.
Also, another thing, the board is very, very sure that there shouldn't be any vacation, road vacations at all, and I think that maybe considering vacations right now, there's no road vacation, we should...
That's our recommendation.
Yeah, I think that's in the, that's in the master plan, draft master plan.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else from the board that, any comments? You say you want, I would ask for a motion.
One second, one second, one second.
You're still in the program, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I still want to talk a bit.
I'm sorry.
When we talk about widening or dualizing streets, could we, like, are we going to widen or dualize? And I'm thinking that we need to come with maybe a, you know, something, a traffic level service that we want to see as built traffic level service, which the township will have to do a...
Traffic study.
Yeah, a traffic study and come up with what the as-built level service would be, and maybe if you call, let's say, we want to see a level C, so talk about Cross Street for a second, we want to see a level C, right now, half the town is a F, and we want to see a level C, and then we'll know, the town will know which way to go, is it dualized or widened.
Widen doesn't have any effect, I always spoke about that.
When we spoke about widening, we were talking about...
Attorney, attorney, attorney.
That has to be clarified as well.
I think we said on record, I think you said, we spoke to a county, and the county said they are bringing in a attorney on Cross Street, and so, somebody made a comment that was just a matter of few inches, that's not correct.
Oh, you are?
Unless the legal right and the justice of justice, we should bring up for level F, for level C, I'm saying.
Well, let me just add something in that regard, I'm not a traffic engineer, but the idea of a level of service is kind of complex, because a level of the service can be different things at different locations on different roads, and different levels of service for different turning movements on different intersections. So, I think you need to be kind of careful when you say, we want, you can't adopt the ordinance until you get to a certain level of service on the road, because it's going to be, are we here, a variety of different testimonies from different traffic engineers?
We'll take the township engineer, the township engineering firm, I mean, let it come from the township, not from the...
I think it's to bring, they say they have to bring in, let's say, the level that they're running on right now currently, we can't make it worse.
Than an F, so...
Okay.
No, but I think a level service at C, we're building this place out, we want to see traffic move, let's get a C. I think that makes sense.
And we may get it with the just turning lanes on...
If we get it with turning lanes, then traffic moves, I think everybody here is going to be happy. If we don't get it with turning lanes, then we do allow it.
We're dealing with another 2,000 homes, why aren't you doing that?
We're talking about as-built, so as-built, what is the level of service, which is travel rate?
Mr. Ron, Mr. Chairman, I would, Mr. Ron, I would leave that to the drafting of the ordinance by the township committee, I think you're getting into a level that you, I think you want to leave that to the township committee, and those ordinances come back to the planning board for review.
And they listen to us about 40% of the time. They don't really listen to the board when it comes to...
Well, another approach, and may make a suggestion, another approach, because I know that the board is concerned about... Another approach, because I know that the board is concerned about the township committee acting in a relatively quick manner with regards to the increase of the transportation improvement district across the township. One of the things that would be part of the crafting of a TID would be specifically looking at the nature of the improvements that would be necessary to support the level of development that would be anticipated pursuant to the requirements, pursuant to what would be proposed in the master plan. And that could be road widens and improvements that could be traffic. So, the idea here is, what you want to have, is you want to have a specific plan of improvements. It's not sort of like, you know, willy-nilly here. You want to have a very comprehensive and very detailed identification of those improvements that are going to be necessary to support the level of development that is being proposed in the master plan. Then, what you then have is you can say, you can do, as part of that, you can create your phasing pursuant, of the zoning pursuant to the certain improvements that are made. And then you have in place the provisions to have developers pay their fair share of that, those improvements township-wide. So, if somebody's in the, developing in the northeast of the township, they will actually have to support the development, the improvements that are necessary in the southwestern part of the township. Right now, you have transportation improvement districts that cover two of the southwestern portions of the southwestern and the south-central portions of the township. Very important, because that's where a lot of the development activity is taking place. But this then rationalizes it, it kind of puts it township-wide, everybody's contributing in, but more importantly, you have the plan, so you know what exactly the improvements that are going to be necessary to support the level of growth and development, and then you could have in the ordinance the phasing requirements that are necessary, so certain things get implemented once these, these improvements are put in place. So, one, you've incentivized the township committee to take relatively quick action. Number two, you've incentivized the development community to provide for their fair share of those improvements, but do it in a manner that the trust, the trust fund gets built up. So, then what you can do is you can prioritize where those investments take place. So, for example, if developers are contributing around the township, and you think that the southwestern, the improvements have to take place first, you can target your money into the areas in southwest where it's, where those improvements are desperately needed.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, any board members?
I just, I asked a question earlier, I don't know, would you have a chance to confirm, where it's going from a B five to a B five-eight? Has that been part of a previous master plan's recommendation? In the Chestnut area? Because that concerns me, if it hasn't happened.
I believe it was, it, it's been a while since I've looked at the...
I haven't even recorded.
But that's, yeah, that was one of the things we did.
I have it, I have it all. You need the original map?
You have the one that shows what's current?
I emptied out my car when I came in.
Yes. I have one map that shows the current.
Do you know where to look at it? In the book?
Yes.
In the old books?
Yes, it's not in there.
No, it was a separate sheet.
Oh, I have it, give me a second.
I have colors on it, red and pink, I think, or yellow.
Give me one second here. I think that it's just an important question for me to get out of here.
I know which sheet you're talking about, it wasn't part of the book.
Right, no, no, I put a lot of stuff in.
You put it in the book?
Yeah.
It was a sheet, it was a sheet like this, I remembered.
Do you recall discussing with the density subcommittee, Justin?
Yeah, that, that, yeah, that, well, we're calling it Chestnut Street, but it's really Longwood Seventy, and then it backs up to Chestnut Street also. That, that's one of the, the development notes in the smart growth plan, which the township approved. That's what I remember.
Okay, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Stand, yeah.
That's what I remember.
Okay, thank you.
That was part of the prior master plan recommendations, it was also in the identified, it was also identified as a note in the, in the 2013, the smart growth plan, so.
A B five, it was recommended or a B five?
I don't remember the specific zoning designation, but in the smart growth plan, it calls for a mix of high-density residential, retail, commercial.
Which is B five, yeah.
The smart growth plan doesn't talk about specific amount of units. That's not, it doesn't, it doesn't reference, you know, there should be a hundred units or five hundred, it says a high-density residential with a mix of, and by the way, the same thing, the same thing was called out in the smart growth plan for the corner of Massachusetts and Cross Street. A mix of residential, high, you know, multifamily buildings with retail, and that was squashed, for good reason, I think, because, you know, people don't walk to the stores there, so. But the same thing was called out for that, for that area too, which was, which was squashed.
Good, thank you.
And I think that the, again, I'm just speaking to myself, I don't know what other board members, but...
I'll find out for the votes.
Right, I mean, it was brought up, I think Lou brought it up, maybe it was brought up, you know, the traffic impact, the district that you're making, like, we just spoke now, before these ordinances are adopted, I mean, the same way we want, I mean, before they go into effect, before they go into effect, we should, the township should have the impact fee or the...
That should be the first, that should be the first ordinance coming to us.
Yeah, in other words, the impact fee should be in place before anything is considered. Yeah, absolutely.
It should go, together with the widening and, it should go at that time.
Right. I think we agree on that.
Okay. And we agree that widening means adding a turnway?
And to bring it up.
I, I think your suggestion, Elliot, is an excellent suggestion, in other words...
I never thought I'd hear that from you.
What? I say that all the time, but the ordinance will come back to us for adoption, if we don't like the way it looks, then we, then, you know, we, in other words, the township committee could take our recommendations into account right now, or they, or they won't. Just like if the ordinance comes back, they could take our recommendations into account, or they won't. So, in other words, but I like your suggestion, in other, there's not a one-size-fits-all for this, that, that's what you're saying, basically.
Yeah, and that's, that's why I like, I personally like better, you know, if we could recommend a level service, I mean, if we got a level service C in Lakewood on a road, that's unbelievable, I mean, right?
If you want to put that recommendation in there, I'm, I think that's an excellent idea, I think it's a very good idea.
I thought dualizing, it would ease up the school traffic, where there are schools, they could sit in that lane, and it won't hinder people going back and forth, but if you have returning lanes, you gain nothing by the school problem.
I think Mr. Flansbury recommended, by Mr. LaRosa, the township should work to make a special school, to...
Yeah, but you have...
So, if the recommendation is to bring it up to a level C, what are the takes?
Let's do what?
What are the takes? Mr. Flansbury, anything else?
I can't really say no, but I think I want to...
Okay. Yes, yes.
A quick question. You're going to be putting in twelve, fourteen thousand people. Anyone thought of the hospital of medical needs of these people? Because I know the hospitals are strained and as it is, what, what should we look for? What can we expect, maybe of the builder, putting ERG centers or something?
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, I want to take a motion. Mr. Flansbury, you have a question?
I think there are a couple of issues that, just in the interest that, you know, if a motion is made, it can be seconded, and perhaps we can, we could move along.
Right.
There might be a couple items where maybe we should pull the board, and however the both, however the board feels, you know, perhaps the motion could be based on, on a feeling of the board, as opposed to having motions, and then seconded, and then no votes, or motions, I mean, however the chairman wants to do it, that would be...
I think we spoke, I think we tried to make a motion.
Would you want to make a motion?
I...
Mr. Ryan, do you want to make?
For what, a motion or a vote?
No, I, I think we should pull, for example, we're talking about...
All the different ideas.
Yeah, we're talking about the three-point-six units per acre of a golf course. We talked about whether that should be single-family detached, I'm sorry, R twelve, single-family detached, or whether that should allow for whatever's allowed under the current conditional use provisions. I think it's important, maybe, that the board just has a consensus, so whoever makes the motion, is at least...
As I was asking, Brandon, right?
Exactly, last time we made a couple motions, they died, I think we should take consensus to the board, and then we should...
Well, I like what John did, Brandon ran, you went through each item that we discussed, and you took a vote for on that.
So, basically, we have right now, the...
Changing the R twelve to the three-point-six, that's number one?
The R twelve.
Well, we're talking about, yeah, we have a hundred acres of contiguous property, whether we're going to say that...
R twelve, single-family, or...
Right, or just reduce, lift the age restriction and reduce the, the density from what it is at four-point-five to three-point-six.
Three-point-six, and the same amount of units with single or duplex.
I think these items should be made, you know...
Okay, so, Mr. Flansbury?
Before we do it.
And may I suggest the board, again, so that there's no misinterpretations, that be as, really as clear as possible in terms of what you're, you're telling us to change. The one thing that I, on the density question, there's also a subject question that the board wanted to address with regards to the application of net versus gross on a track basis, or, or, net versus gross, or really the net developable areas versus the total gross area of the track, so I think the board has to address that as well.
And that could be part of this, you know, consensus of what, of what we're going to do with the hundred acres or more.
So, what do you want to call it, the current?
Net and R twelve, no single, no duplex, only...
Okay, Mr. Flansbury? Justin?
I, I think that we're reducing the density from four-point-five to three-point-six, and whatever's allowed under the current conditional use provision should be allowed.
I...
The, we're reducing the, the net, the net density from four-point-five per acre to three-point-six per acre. And I think that whatever is allowed under the current conditional uses should, should be allowed, that's mine.
Which would be allowed?
Which, whatever's allowed under the conditional uses, so that's, it's a mixture of different residential uses, multifamily detached.
So, it's...
But not to exceed the three-point-six, in other words, you're having the same amount of...
I want to add something, Mr. Flansbury, because I think, at least what I'm hearing might be contradictory, because you're saying the current is, is net, but the current four-point-five is gross.
It's gross, it's gross.
Whatever the current, whatever the conditional use allows for, but it should be reduced from four-point-five to three-point-six.
This is three-point-six, so you're saying we're going from gross to gross, and that's also the way the MLUL is set up. MLUL bases the density on the gross acre.
Yeah, that's how the municipal land use law sets it up, right?
Okay, so that, that's what you want, you want to, you know, you're saying there's a reduction, that's what you want to do.
My recommendation, originally, the recommendation was to build an R seven-five on the broad lesson, and we said that should be the density of an R twelve. I would feel comfortable if it's three-point-six per acre, to be allowing the density, and whatever is allowed currently should be allowed, but duplexes are allowed, as long as we don't go over the three-point-six. Okay, Mr. Flansbury?
I'll be over soon, Louis, I'll be over soon.
In the high dosage or something.
Okay, Mr. Flansbury?
I would be okay with three-point-six. Being, because what's common?
Okay, and then?
No.
No, and Mr. Flansbury? I have nothing else.
That's the first question.
Well, Mr. Franklin did not say anything about the gross, he said it should be R twelve.
The three-point-six is okay, as it gets to the duplex.
Oh, okay, thank you, I just...
Five to one, right?
On the...
You've got three who are comfortable with widening the density with our type of use, you've got three who want to limit the density and go single-family only.
Is it the same amount of units either which way?
Yes.
Meaning, if they're entitled to, let's say, pardon me, say, for number five hundred, is that five hundred, if they do duplex, is that a thousand families?
No, no, five hundred.
It would be five hundred, single families, or two hundred, fifty?
Duplexes, duplexes, right. Very, very clear, it's restricted for same...
The way I'm thinking, the way it's what you like, is what I admit, I don't think, I, I think a community could use a mix, when you look at so many houses, it could use a mix of what's on house and residence. Everybody wants, that's probably everybody wants to, but not everybody gets it.
Right, some things are cheaper, and as long as we don't go over the density, we're giving them experiences for people, for cheaper roads.
You might end up with, I don't know, seventy-five duplexes and two hundred detached, in other words, it's a mixed type of opportunity.
What else would be possibly going in there?
Nothing.
Multifamily.
Whatever.
Are they going to be community centers?
They already have...
I just want to know, like, if that's...
I think that is a callback, when it comes back from application, and the developer will have to...
Community centers positive or negative?
Positive, yeah. I think that twenty-four hours is going to be a primary community, something like, I need to have a patient, then I'm sure that there goes any of those.
You have to have a community center for that, so...
What's the downside to the three-point-six density?
If you specify twelve thousand square foot lots, they've got to be twelve thousand square feet regardless of how much of it is usable. Go with three-point-six and have it immediately, or three-point-six on the property.
The only difference is as current.
Essentially, if you, if you did have some multifamily, you'd actually be using actual less developable acreage, so you'd actually have more, more opportunities for open space, sort of like cluster.
Is there, is where yard setbacks the same?
We, the, I'm not hearing any recommendation from the planning board that suggests changing the, the current standards that are in the conditional use requirements.
Is there a difference about an R twelve or an R seven-five?
Oh, well, yeah, obviously, that's, that's correct. If you, if you did it, if you did the single families under the design standards of an R twelve, which I would assume is what you would do, then you'd have, you'd modify the setback requirements to be consistent with the R, R twelve requirements. So, you could say that the density is, is three-point-six, and that if you're doing the single families, you're doing it pursuant to the R twelve standards, if you're doing the duplex, you're doing it pursuant to the R twelve standards. And if you're doing multifamily, you're doing multifamily based on the standards in the district. So, you, as I think it was one of the board members said, you wind up with a, with a range of different types and different lot sizes, but commensurate with the...
Comming up the federation, right, the layout.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's basically what you're doing.
Saying, is I just want to make sure that a single family has to be, let's say, a hundred feet off of the property lines of the seniors, and you build something else, will they be fifty feet, or it would have to be minimum?
I think you said you keep it to the same standards.
The same standards.
Or duplex or, or single.
Yeah, and, 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 again, we're getting into the details of the ordinance, the ordinance could provide for those buffers, they can provide for the track, if you want to make a recommendation in plan, that there should be sufficient buffers, or that there should be, you know, setbacks, I think somebody mentioned the one hundred-foot, they mentioned a setback from, from Cross Street. Whatever that might be, the board can make these general recommendations, and make sure that the ordinance that gets delivered to the board for review, addresses adequately pursuant to your recommendations in the plan.
And those two things are already included in the master plan, greater, more setbacks, the wider streets that we've been talking about, more open space, not just the one little potlot, I mean, we're talking, and you're talking about a, a big project where you could really have something that's similar, frankly, similar toward the senior community, you know, a nice, a nicer type of development. And those types of recommendations are already included in the master plan.
Yeah, you have those, they're blanket recommendations that you're suggesting apply to any, any new residential development, which I also believe that you also had some recommendations for open space in community facilities. And by the way, they are, in the existing adult community standards, there are, there are requirements for recreational facilities, but they can be, it, a, a, the types of recreational facilities for an adult community may be somewhat different than you would have if you had a non, a non-age restricted...
Well, instead of bocce, you could have basketball, you know.
Okay, thank you.
If you, if you were changing to a three-point-six, as opposed to R twelve, are there minimum lot width, is there any of those requirements?
Well, right now, I, right now, I think we're talking about the same types of requirements, whatever's required currently, and then when the ordinance has come back to us, we can, we can make whatever recommendations we want.
Is there a minimum lot width now? Currently, is there a minimum lot width?
Yeah, there's always minimum lot, of course, yeah, there's lot width, there's Yeah, there's always minimum lot, of course, yeah. There's lot width, there's front to front yard, rear yard setbacks, side yard setbacks, it's all.
I don't see a difference between the two.
I think Mr. Slavka said that we're recommending R.6 with this, we could recommend with the standards of R12, so we will have the buffers. If you need 30 foot in the front, you need 20 foot, whatever this, whatever this setbacks. Okay, so you're okay with it?
Yes.
Okay, so Mr. Franklin is okay. The next question, I think we had, uh, recommendation, where we have a campus ordinance that's currently much higher density, we could have multifamily, apartment buildings, I think it was that. And we will decrease it to an R75. They could currently build an apartment building. So Mr. Franklin, would you, would you agree with that?
No, leave it.
Leave what? For apartment building?
Yeah, leave it as is.
Okay. Change it to lower density to R75.
I think it makes sense, the, the less, the less than the.
I think so. Mr. Franklin? But it's, it's, I, I, when it comes back, we'll, we'll have to just, watch how we're waiting. 20 minutes we could, right?
Don't think the recommendation has to be pretty ironed quiet, also, there's only for what's currently approved and that's.
It's not even approved, we don't like it, Dave? They're not sure of R75. Okay, so most of the board would recommend the campus ordinance to be a low density, changing from apartment buildings to, uh, R75. Everything still in it said, it's, it's something that's currently approved as a campus ordinance and not built.
Not a. Right, right, not a.
Doesn't even follow the construction. Okay, and then, I think the last issue, or.
That wasn't the kind that they had on, is that with, uh?
Uh, currently, when you say current, let's define.
Correct, Mr. Rose, Mr. Rose, he's another attorney.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, as, currently has a valid board approval as of the date of the adoption of the master plan?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Basically, we're going, I'm sorry, we're going back to Cross Street, we're, going back to Cross Street, we have a recommendation that, or, we're putting a turning lane, we should bring it up to level to level C. Whatever it takes, if it's dualized or whether we're going to add a turning lane.
I'll go first this one, I say both.
Both as a dualization in Widen or both as a dualization and level C?
Both, yeah.
Okay.
Not getting a, um, a level C by dualizing it, as we spoke about.
Okay, Mr. Franklin.
Dualization.
Mr. Franklin?
Turning lanes.
Turning lanes to bring it up to a, 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 a level, level C. Mr. Franklin?
I, I, the, the level C with the turning lanes and or the dualization, which I think makes most sense is.
And we would agree to, as long as we bring it up from X amount, which is an effort to bring it up, whatever it takes for engineers, it's, uh, turning lanes, traffic lights, sidewalks, whatever it takes to make it better in the trade. Mr. Franklin? Okay, the question I asked now was on Cross Street. And Dave, Mr. Franklin?
Comment on this. Cross, Prospect in Massachusetts, they're all county roads.
Right.
The only thing we can do is send a letter to push it, but I know they're doing the paperwork right now, so.
Okay, okay.
But then, you have to treat it as almost as three, it's all county roads.
Okay.
And they're working on it.
Okay, so you would agree to, to bring it up to level C, whatever it takes, you would agree, I think we can say so then. And the other question now you're, you're asking.
Prospect should be brought up to a level C, but the question was, um, Prospect and Pine had both been mentioned, are those included in these recommendations that are different requirements?
Mr. Franklin, please put it back. Close. Mr. Franklin? Okay, so you would agree to bring it up to level C, turning lanes, whatever it takes. Mr. Franklin, would you agree to that? Yeah, can I agree with you, please, Mr. Franklin?
I.
Mr. Franklin? Okay, Dave, and Mr. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Franklin, Mr. Dave?
The, when Coke put that into their master plan, he was responsible, he put in a new street. If the scheme goes through, you have a look at that.
Okay.
Because Bill doesn't do it.
Okay. Did we have any other, Mr. Franklin, any other questions?
I'm sorry, you said Prospect and Pine or you only discussed Pine?
Who, who, please, please.
Massachusetts is part of the.
So it's a county road.
Because we can't, we also want to see.
Uh, maybe not, but yes. Okay, and what, what recommendation was originally, uh, for turning lanes, which was the state was bringing.
So what we talked about, that we were talking about why we were not.
Lanes or turning lanes. Because I, I, the mayor has told me, that was in contact with the state and the state told him, I think, within 18 months to, to here, please be quiet in the noise. I think this morning after two years, there will be a turning, they're repaving everything from County Road to Towns River and they're adding the turning lane.
I, I think our motion has to say that, like, we were talking the whole time, is that we don't want to see any of this increased density until.
Until the turn.
Turning lane throughout, from the, from the lanes until.
Wherever is needed.
Crosswalks, you can't cross Route 9 right now, is also recognition for crosswalks.
That's a very good point.
There's no crosswalks.
What do you mean by crosswalks?
I live on Route 9.
Shh, please, please, no screaming from audience. A crosswalk, you mean that should be, a traffic light should be, you know, lane.
Like, traffic light is very difficult to get, a crosswalk is an easy fix. I believe there must be like.
It's like striped?
Miles that there's no crosswalk, so if you want to cross the street, you gotta walk a mile, I guess, to the cross and the more fact that you go, oh, you have the possibility of getting hit by a car.
What do you mean by a crosswalk?
It's a crosswalk, it's like, like, you know, it's in the street, uh, crossing, so when somebody comes up to you, you gotta stop them, it's just.
Okay, okay. I, I agree with you.
I just.
I think it's a good idea, I just think that, how do you, how do you put a crosswalk in the middle of a highway without a traffic light?
You have big yellow signs with crosswalk of people.
Like, like, like a railroad crossing.
Oh, brilliant, you have a children crossing.
I'm just trying to, I think it's a good idea, I'm just trying to.
The only thing I would, I would say with that, though, that the, um, the state of New Jersey, the DOT is going to define, you know, that, that's not something that is going to be influenced by planning board recommendations, I don't know if you want to tie your zoning into that because.
That's the same public county.
Well, the, the counties are a little different, I don't think, I think they're more responsive to the towns than, than the state would be on Route 9.
But, but, Mr. Jackson, I know that the, what I said before, the state is bringing the turning lanes, they are making improvements.
Yeah, they could be doing that, but I don't know.
So we can recommend.
I don't know how they're going to design for crosswalks.
We can, we can.
Make the recommendation, but I wouldn't make the zoning based on.
We can't, and, and, of course, we're, we're subjected to the DOT, we're, we're subjected to the DOT, they override us, right? So we can make a recommendation to put in this safety issue.
Hold on a second.
Mr. Franklin?
The, the winding and, and the turning lanes on Route 9, we were talking the whole time that it's going to be, our increased density is going to be subject to that happening. That means, we could control it, because township doesn't adopt it until that is done.
Right.
So we are controlling it, so yes, it's in the state's hands, but township goes second, not first.
Okay, well, I, I know.
We discussed.
I understand, the turning lanes I know is happening, I don't know if the DOT is going to want to put on crosswalks.
We could recommend crosswalks.
We could recommend, okay. Is, is there any other issues that was spoken about? I don't think so, so, Mr. I think.
Sidewalks on cross streets?
I mean, absolutely, I said we don't approve any applications on sidewalks at all.
Yeah, yeah, nothing's going to be.
You think it's all walking around the street?
There is no, no approval ones without sidewalks. Okay, the sidewalks are all, shh, one other thing. The mayor has told, told me, we must, it is not one any more development rate without any sidewalks. There are a lot of kids going and it's dangerous, no sidewalks, no kids out of the streets. Right? Okay?
Let's get at least five foot wide sidewalks on them major roads too.
Okay.
Because if people walk side by side, you'd eat five foot.
Okay, I think that's your recommendation, you know, like, every time.
For a long time.
You are for long term, you know.
For our separation on diets.
Okay.
Speak for yourself, Louis.
I think the pizza store, I think we're going to diet, huh? Okay, at this time.
One second, one more thing that we discussed.
Mr. Franklin, yes.
The, which I brought, I brought up before, that, that mistake that we discussed, mistake, maybe, possibly if it's, if it's in this. The R, you're talking about the R10. I'm talking about that R10, I got switched to an R40, so if it's within the sewer service area and it should be in R40, uh, it should be in R10, I want to just.
Are you okay with that, Mr. Franklin? There was one area that's currently R10 and it was a recommendation to put it up to R40 because they thought it was not in the sewer service area. As of now, we heard testimony that it is in sewer service, so we want to leave it as R10, are you okay with that?
I'm okay.
Are you okay with that? Okay, Mr. Franklin, are you okay? Are you okay with it, Mr. Franklin, Mr. Franklin? You're okay, and Mr. Franklin, okay? Okay.
Can I keep on going? No, a couple more things.
We're stopped, no.
We're, we're almost done.
Okay.
How does the board feel about Prospect and James Street being included in the streets that we're talking about being widened?
Prospect and James, is that?
They came up tonight.
Is that a county or is the?
One is probably a county and one's probably a, a local.
Prospect's included.
Prospect is included?
Yes, we are, we are. Most of the board said that they want included.
So Prospect is included in those streets.
That's what I was saying.
And how does the board feel about James?
I think James Street flows nicely, except for when you come, get up to Cross Street. In other words, otherwise, James Street does flow pretty nicely.
Yeah, it's. Between Cross Street and West, no, but going.
Well, I'm talking about James Street between Cross Street and Sunset. Right?
Yeah, but James at the corner of.
Flows very nicely. James in the corner of Route 9 is another story, and James in the corner of Cross Street sometimes get a little, can get a little sticky.
Yeah, when you go from, from Sunset to Route 9.
When you go from Sunset to Route 9, right, some, it gets a little sticky sometimes.
Little sticky sometimes.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a traffic light over there, David, right? There's no traffic.
Traffic light at Sunset and James, right, and then there's another traffic light at Route 9.
From that traffic light, so how does the board feel about having that also?
We, we have the tracks over there, we have the tracks over there, right? So I don't want to do, like, widen it, who, who, whose jurisdiction is that?
I don't know, do you know?
Yeah, there's tracks going across it over James, there are tracks. I don't know if we can widen it, I don't know if we can widen our way when there's tracks here.
There's tracks on Route 9 also.
Yeah, there's, there's tracks over Route 9 and there's tracks over.
I think we should put in a recommendation that that's, that's widened.
Okay.
That they look at that to try to widen. Street be widened as well.
Okay. Give me one second, yeah.
How about a little more parking for schools, you drive down Oak Street. It's a little.
I think part of the recommendation was to, stayed, the dormitories.
Oh, so, right, so that also.
That also stays dormitories, and they're, we're going to need more, that's conditionally, we need more parking, catering was, needs more parking, but the current zone, the not, the current alignment to the parking isn't enough. And catering was, we might be on our own zones, we have to have sufficient parking, we got the orders updated. Mr. Franklin, do you have anything?
Last thing, um, this last thing is that I recommend, I would like to recommend that as part of this master plan, the township look to put together, call it maybe a circulation committee, uh, some sort of, uh, um, a, 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 a group of, of working people, of people that could work on trying to figure out how to make the town work, what kind of improvements we could put in, you know, maybe it's, it's putting, uh, signalizing or putting a stop sign in every intersection, making it more like a city, maybe it's something else, I don't know what it is. But I'd like to see a working committee to work on the circulation, it's such a huge problem. I volunteer to be on this committee.
Okay, Mr. Franklin, and we also had, we spoke about, one of the recommendations was that the government body, the design body, the program body should get together a few times a year, going over the programs of town, together. That committee, that committee should make.
I think there has to be some.
Should all work together.
Designated, also the township should have someone designated to work on traffic improvements.
Yeah, and we should all work together, we should all work together.
Uh, just may I comment on that? I, I know that when we had done a couple of, uh, transportation, circulation and downtown parking studies a number of, a few years ago, we actually did have to present to a township transportation committee.
Committee.
There was one at, at one point in time, I don't know if it's been, it's active, but certainly that's, that would, that's a reasonable recommendation.
And what we're going to do is, we're going to get everybody together, we're going to go down to Tremeton with hundreds of people, buses, like what the public school system did here.
Let me know, let me know, Alex, I'm, I'm in. Um, there's one other thing that I wanted to bring up, there was somebody here from SC Circle that talked about, uh, his deed restricted property, that, that they're A1, and, uh, we did talk about not changing that designation at all, so I think that should be clarified, that that area of SC Circle, because it's all deed restricted, we're not, we're not recommending a change of designation at all. SC Circle's off Farid, off Farid.
And, and there's one thing that.
Do we eat the residential lots, that's the way they want to keep it, and just keep it like that.
And there was one thing that Mr. Franklin said, which we voted to keep it, we didn't, we voted on that, it was Mr. Franklin. Uh, yes. Everybody knows, please be quiet, go outside, please, we can not hear, we would like to finish. Yes. Everybody knows, please be quiet, go outside, please, we can not hear, we would like to finish. I just want to be, before I ask for much from Mr. Franklin, I'm going to be fair to you both. So, have you anything else to say? Have you, if you like to make a motion? I think, I think we should, we go, we go to working relations on the.
If we have everything down, that, you know, as the consensus of the board was on all these different items, I would recommend, recommend approving it, with the consensus of the board.
Okay, so, I think we should just, I think we should recap.
Okay, so maybe Marty should recap, see what he has now. No, oh, you want me to do?
No, no, Mr. Franklin, you do.
I'll do, yeah, I am.
You do, you make the motion. I, I want to say.
Okay, I hope I get everything. Um, we were talking about, I'm going to go into one of my list over here, that I have notes, um, we're talking about the 100 acres, um, of undeveloped, there has, had, there has to be some language in there, um, that says that it's restricted to un, 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 underdeveloped or undeveloped or. So, did you have language you'd like to suggest for this motion? Of, of, have we, don't, uh, how don't, how do we stop five blocks of people getting together and saying, okay, we have 100 acres together and we would like to develop over here? I need language that prevents that. Why can't we say it's currently? It's currently 100 acres.
I don't, I don't know if you, not that I'm an attorney, but I don't know that you could really say only those property owners there can take advantage of this, and if you guys meet the requirements, it doesn't matter.
Your concern is, you, you want undeveloped to include properties that don't have, you know, materially developed structures. You don't want to make it so you can't do a golf course, I mean, there might be some, a structure here and there on a golf course, but you mean a, a materially undeveloped, meaning no homes, no, um.
Improvements, no improvements.
I, I think what he said earlier, a golf course, you could argue whether that's undeveloped or not, that might be considered developed, so obviously you don't want to exclude that from.
Well, I think what we're saying, if we have a development, and somebody buys a small piece of property, all of the time, we have 100 acres, whereas on this density goes up, you can get much more. Let's go.
I think the master plan, uh, characterized it as undeveloped.
Hello.
Mr. Franklin just goes very well, exactly what's undeveloped.
Okay.
Undeveloped with included golf course, is that?
Yes.
Not, not structures, no houses. Not prison, okay, next.
Um, are you taking notes on the motion?
Yes.
Please, I'm sorry.
The, the, the next thing we discussed, that we had a vote of the board with Mr. Furman being the, the swing vote over there, was to allow, um, 3.6 units, uh, per acre, allowing whatever is currently.
Gross.
So that'd be gross acre.
That'd be gross acre.
Per the MLUL.
Right.
Okay.
But that would include total.
Gross acre, yes.
All household.
Yes.
Yes.
Full number.
Yeah, basement is not a household, but that's every household.
Really? Yeah.
Well, it would be whatever's, um, currently allowed.
With a single family house.
Correct.
Okay. Basements are not, next.
Okay, so basements will be.
Yeah.
Um. Where do we go next over here? Okay, then I have the campus ordinance. Okay, the, the campus ordinance, um, to allow, I think we had a consensus of the, uh, well, it was a vote of the board, it wasn't, uh, unanimous, but, um.
Most of the board wanted.
Most of the board said that they would allow whatever is currently approved as a campus and did not start building yet their campus.
To go to, go down to our 75.
To allow them to build our 75.
Right.
Fully approved and not started.
Yes.
Okay, continue your motion, please.
Um. Whenever we spoke about widening, uh, the street, that meant adding turning lane. That, the definition of what we meant as widening is, is turning lane. Um, whatever, whenever we spoke about, um, widening or dualizing, we, I think the consensus of the board, or the vote of the board, was that we wanna get to a traffic level C, um, as the traffic engineer is gonna look at it as built.
Whatever it takes.
I'm confused because I don't recall specifying turning lane or not turning lane. I thought we were just trying to get to a level C for Cross Street, Pine Street.
Whatever it takes.
Massachusetts.
When we were discussing at the last couple of meetings, widening, widening and turning lanes weren't to change.
No, no.
Yeah.
Getting to, if, if the board's recommendation is getting to a level C, that could be a variety of different improvements. Could be widening, turning lanes, dualization, uh, other intersection improvements to get it down to, to a C.
Okay. We have to engineer it, to make sure. I, I think the way we wanna see, get to a level C would be through widening or turning.
We need to clarify the list of which ones you meant turning lanes and which ones you meant widening and dualization because there's a number of streets out there and the recommendations are fine all over the place.
Yeah, Ellie, what about, I mean, just to get to a level C, whatever it takes, turning lanes, widening, it may take a variety of things.
Which means, I think, everything besides Route 9, Route 9 or Turning Lane, everything else, Prospect, Massachusetts, should be brought up to widening or level C, whatever.
All other streets.
That's the notes I had, was, was Cross, Pine, Prospect, Massachusetts and James bring to level C and Route 9.
Just a turning lane, cause the, the, which doesn't make it.
It has to be throughout that street. I mean, the traffic is moving.
Is that what you agree? Is that your motion? Pardon?
That's my motion. I think that was the consensus of the board.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I don't see that.
I think the only other three things we agreed upon were impact fees should be established everywhere first, sidewalks required everywhere, and that block 1139-ish area that was our 10.
Yeah, if it's not just that block, yeah, everything that mistakenly was.
That R10 area, if it's within the sewer service area, do not rezone it to R40.
And it should stay currently on 10.
And that James Street should be recommended to be widened, widened from.
That's not in the level C category?
Uh, Justin, you, you, one side of it, like, you like the way it's moving, from Sunset West, but when you go Sunset towards Route 9.
You're going east, you have a problem.
Right.
So.
Yeah, I mean, you're going, right, when you're going east.
We're recommending that the township.
Should bring it up a lot.
That's one of the streets where the township has to work to try to.
I have to move to level C, I think.
You see, we, we, I have a hard time saying widened. I have a hard time because there's areas that were just built up, that would, that, that there was just recent, um, development done there.
To nitty gritty details that aren't up to you to.
But if it's past, we're recommending that, that it should be widened.
And it's made to level C.
But recommending, I'm just curious.
Shh, one more time, one more time.
If you stop building again, you go right up to Epping.
So then we'll approve it.
No, we're looking at it as built. That means whatever, whatever, we're saying that it's able to be built here, when the engineer looks at it, he has to see that everything's built and it's still gonna work.
That's right. That's not the wrong approach.
James Street, you're saying that all these zone changes are contingent on James Street going east, be level C? Is that what you're saying?
I.
I, I don't, I don't, I don't see that the zone changes are pertinent to James, Sunset Road, east to.
Where it is, because a lot of the traffic is coming, of course, getting to, I, I think of any development on James Street, that it should be done. I don't think James Street needs it. If I, if I would know that there's enough room with the recent development that was put there, um, and I, I don't know if anyone knows, if there is, if anyone in the room would know, if, if there's sufficient, um, room to widen it, to dualize it or, or somehow widen, dualize it would be the way.
Can I, can I make a suggestion here? I, I think.
Do you want to?
No, I think what you have to be careful about is the level of detail that you're suggesting, first of which, my understanding that this was initially keyed into when you wanted to see the zoning go into effect to, to make the changes.
Correct.
Okay. Be kinda careful about where, what direction you're going, pre, post-development in terms of levels and, 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 uh, what specific improvements that you would wanna see in specific areas, because that, you, that's getting into way too much detail from the standpoint of what you're going to be dealing with or what you should be dealing with in, in the master plan.
Okay, my, my recommendation is that we dualize it. That, that we dualize it, um, from at, at least Sunset going east.
It really, but not everything's contingent on James Street. I think, but it is across, we will object to it to be contingent. That's your motion.
Okay, make a recommendation without a being contingent. That's fine.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Anything else here? I spoke about having, um, a committee set up in circulation.
Circulation committee, that was the last point I took down, number eight.
Okay.
In the A1 zone, so. That's the circle.
And, and.
That wasn't changed, yeah.
Oh, and, and when we talk about, um, um, dualizing or, or widening, when we talk about getting to a level service C on Cross Street, we're talking about it to Route 9.
Who would agree?
Cross Street all the way to nine.
Route 9, Jackson's.
Do, do I have a second anymore? Should I miss anything?
I just wanna clarify one thing, cause I'm a little bit, I just wanna make sure, with the, uh, with the golf course property, the 3.6 units per acre, that's gross, based on what, the way density is defined in the MLUL.
Yes.
If you have a basement apartment, is that counted a unit?
I think the ordinance is currently silent on that, and I think if we try and make a determination on one section of the ordinance.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that that's.
It's going to comp.
Whatever's allowed.
Different things, I just wanna make sure, what's per lap?
What's allowed?
Calculated like it is everywhere else.
I, 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 I'll recede it, please. Okay, do I have a second on the motion? Okay.
Well, okay, so one second, before we, second, we're talking about the B5, the B5A, you feel wants to, I, no, you feel.
Mr. Farnum.
Mr. Farnum wants to, wants to discuss that and firstly, the reason why I said I'm okay is because if, I, I can't hurt someone that bought property thinking that a ma, a previous master plan, um, approved it. My opinion, that we could take a consensus of the board, so.
I, I want to support on the B5.
I, I, I think that, I personally think the B5A should stay, but why don't, why don't we restrict ingress and egress to Route 70 and not, not, that's not strict.
That's a great idea, huh?
Okay, is that you, is that, is that part of your motion?
Well, I'll make a pardon motion if it's a consensus of the board.
Yes, okay, okay.
That anything that comes out of there, that's not Route 70.
Wait a second.
I'll second.
You second your motion. Well, cool.
Just a second, I'm writing restrict the ingress and egress.
Now, if someone doesn't agree with part of my motion, they should vote no on it.
All right. Mr. Renner's motion and Mr. Farnum's seconded, correct? Mr. Grunberger?
Yes.
Mr. Franklin?
Good.
Mr. Farnum?
Yes.
Mr. Hertzell?
Yes.
Mr. Farnum?
No.
Mr. Renner?
Yes.
Mr. Garfield?
Motion approved. Thank you very much for the board members and for anyone in the public who came out. It's been a lot of meetings. We listen to you and there are a lot of changes to work to tend to that. Thank you very much.
Leave the motion to adjourn?
Uh, no, not yet.
No.
Adjourned? Okay, why are you adjourned? I'm not telling you.
Oh, I, I don't, there was. I don't think that's. That's good, thank you.